Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting will come to order. Let the record show today is June 6th, 2019. The time is 9 o'clock a.m.
My name's Becky.
Becky, thank you. I was struggling. Would you care to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And I apologize for not asking you ahead of time. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Becky Olson, I just could not get Becky. Thank you ma'am for helping me out. Yeah, appreciate that. Thank you.
May I say a prayer?
Oh, yes, yes. Commissioner Kanda asked if he could lead us in a prayer this morning as well.
It's Veterans Day. Please stand in recognition of those heroes that gave their lives for us. So Almighty God our Heavenly Father, in whose hands are the living and the dead, we give thee thanks for all those who thy servants who have laid down their lives in the service of our great country. Grant them in thy mercy and in thy light of thy presence that the good work which thou hast begun in them may be perfected. By thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Well done.
251,000 people landed on that shore.
9,348 of them are still there.
Over 22,700 were injured or wounded, of which 3,000 were killed instantly.
Yeah.
And this was the getting kills just.
The 9,000 that are in that cemetery are 40% of the invasion force. Imagine, and that first couple, and the Army Air Corps, this is another point of interest, had more deaths than all the services combined.
Really?
In the whole war, all those pilots and bombers.
I saw a picture of, you know, we see the guys coming off those ships, the women, the nurses coming off those ships. They were late, I mean, they were the last ones off, but I had never seen that picture before.
Amazing, amazing what they did. I've been there and just looking up those cliffs and imagining the machine guns shooting down on you as they're trying to get up there, it just puts a chill down your back.
Did you see the 97-year-old paratrooper?
Yeah, and he did it. He did four jumps to get there.
Got landed on, but.
He's something else, 98 years old. And the Queen, I thought, was pretty much the last head of state alive that actually served in that war. She was a mechanic and a driver that she trained to be during that time. She sounded pretty strong, too, in her speeches.
Okay. Madam Clerk to the Board, would you conduct the roll, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Kanda.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Yeah.
Attorney Klein Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board, Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
None here.
Nor do I. Audience introductions. Ms. Becky, would you start?
Sure. Becky Olson, Custer County resident.
Is it E.N. or O.N.?
O.N.
Olson.
Jacky Beals for the Senate.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. I don't believe we have any minutes to approve this morning, so we'll move on. Commissioner Items. Commissioner Prince, would you like to start, please? Sorry.
Happy to, sir. We just met last Friday, I believe. I, the only actual meeting I attended was yesterday. I went to the architect meeting, Anderson, and it was a logistics meeting. The judge was there, court security was there. We just discussed what needs were going to be. It was a needs assessment type thing, what needs we wanted, what size. The Judge Hunter had a lot of input on how many tables we needed in the courtrooms and those.
Big picture requirements, like number of beds for the sheriff.
It was to help the architect so that when he actually goes back and starts preparing, he has a good handle. He used the previous document that was done a couple of years ago and expanded on it. He was complimentary of the architect or the engineering firm that did that previously. And we expanded on that. Some of the changes we had, obviously, were there. It was an excellent meeting. It was long, very, very productive. I worked, I don't know how long, a lot of hours on overtime. And when I finally get around to, at comp time, when I finally get around to presenting my suggestions, it's gonna be three lines. But it took me, I had to go along a whole methodology to get there.
They're gonna make a doctoral thesis out of this, right?
I also worked diligently on the OEM position that's available. After talking with HR, we felt that it was appropriate to post it first to internal. And I have some recommendations there. I was the point of contact on that, and I'll give you my report when we get to that. So I spent a lot of hours, didn't go to a lot of meetings, but that's what I did. Oh, excuse me, just, there was a lease at the airport that asked for the chairman's signature. They said it was pretty pressing at the moment. They said it was already approved. I took the liberty, and if I was to overstep my bounds, I'll take a slap in the hand. I signed that lease. I crossed off chairman and wrote commissioner and signed my name.
That's perfect.
But I just want to let you know I did that, so.
Who was that for?
It's not normally my space to do that.
That's the right thing.
I don't remember, to be honest with you.
They bring in almost all of them now.
Yeah, it was a lease, and they said it was already approved. Everything was fine. Jackie was there, the lessors were there, so, and the lesses were there, and I signed it right then and there. We were the lessor, they were the lesses.
They're being where?
At the airport.
Oh, you went out to the airport?
No, we did it right here.
Oh.
They caught me as I was walking down the hall and said, "We gotta have this."
Get back here, we gotta do it now.
In Jackie's office, or?
I actually did it to Clerk's office. I was standing there. So I hope I didn't overstep my bounds, but I did that.
No problem. Good. Okay.
That's it.
All right. Commissioner?
Yeah, boy, it's a whirlwind. I was living in my car for five days. I had to bail out of this meeting and did some things with the Justice Center contract, got that finalized, copies made. And Meredith, you sent the final PDF to them, right, with the signatures?
Just assuming.
On the contract for Johnson, Bob Johnson's work. Remember, we approved it, and I signed it, with the changes that we all had agreed to. And so that's in print, in its color, and are you gonna put a copy in your file? Are you keeping those contracts?
I do need a copy, yeah.
So I guess, Meredith, we need to print one for her at some point.
You want printed or electronic?
What do you want? She's gonna file it.
Where's the original going?
It's back to them now for their final signature with, they signed it, and then I signed it, and then they're, they recorded it. I don't know what they're doing with their piece.
So they haven't signed it yet?
Yeah, they did.
We don't. We have a copy of their?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
We have the signature pages, so she's sent that back. We can just put a copy of that.
Yeah, I usually put the original, but as long as I have a copy with all the signatures.
I interrupt for just one moment. Meredith, could you just make a little sign and put on the door, "OCC Meeting, Welcome", or something like, just so people don't feel they're excluded from our meeting?
Yeah, they got a jury trial going on.
I understand, and the noise, I understand, but I don't want to make it seem like we're excluding anybody from coming in. Thank you, ma'am.
I suppose we ought to have a copy of those.
We should have a hard copy here. It's in the files, in her electronics, but.
Thank you.
So it's all done?
It's all done, and it's on a PDF, so it can't be changed.
Can you, can you forward that electronically to us?
I change PDFs all the time.
Yeah, I know, you can. If you've got the right program, you can do it. Yeah. Okay, so then the airport, I did talk with OT6. We're gonna wait until we see the grant to understand how much money we're dealing with so we can allocate things. They want to wait, which is a good thing. And then we'll work the details, so we'll get back to you as soon as we get that. Now, I talked to Dola about the grant. I'm gonna talk to Greg Winkler, took over for Christie. And so I'm gonna give him another call. We weren't able to sync up because I thought he was, they all thought he was gonna be there, and then he didn't come to the meeting, so. I'll talk with him to make sure he understands how important this is. He does, he's been working with Christie, and she said we're in very good hands with him, so we'll see. And in the CCI meeting, I thought, like Tom and I both have mixed emotions about it, the agenda wasn't that great. We did meet the new staff, I think, what was it, six members on the governor's staff that spoke? And one of the ones that I particularly enjoyed was actually the BLM. We went and had a supper meeting with her. She's the director of the BLM. And in that discussion, I did learn, there's another method to, remember we had this issue, not an issue, we were swapping land with the BLM on the tower out there. There is a process by which, instead of a land purchase transfer, it's a swap, and it's a public use, a recreation deal that they have. And that, in fact, would help us because that gets easy. We already have a right of way to maintain those towers and the road, but we are able to put like a viewing area or have our trails, the Custer County Trails effort, they wanna put a trail, probably a walking trail up there or whatever, to be able to sit up there and take pictures and things. So we'll see how that plays out. She said if you go, the land purchase issue, it takes 20 years. And she, she said, "Yeah, it does." It could take, because it goes back to Washington, and they get their lawyers, and it's a, it's a purchase agreement, and it's, you know, you gotta get an appraisal, and you go all through this crap, and the bureaucrat. And they said, "It might, you might get lucky and do it in 10." I said, "Like to do it if we're gonna do it, to make it coincide with things we're trying to do for tourism and things like that." So anyway, that's in work, and I'll let you know what I find out on that when I find anything. And then, of course, we have the CenturyLink meeting, don't forget, this afternoon at 2:00.
Does it say Ranchers Roos?
Ranchers Roos. Now, they're having, no, they, they do, CenturyLink did the CAF, Connect America Funds, and they're doing that six miles out of town, connecting all that up onto the corner out there. They're applying for a grant. We'll hear his process of what, where he stands with the grant. He thinks they're not gonna be able to get that grant completed, and we'll learn why. But there are other options, and I did talk to the Broadband Deployment Board member that was up there, a guy named Mike Brazil, who deals with that, and he knows Tim Conklin very well, and he's been working that grant with him. So we may have to re, help him restructure that so that they cut out areas that they cannot serve. You know, there's, that grant requires that you run up to the residential address as opposed to the points where they can get it to, so that, and they need to exclude some things to make it qualify, I think. We'll hear Tim's story this afternoon. And then Brazil said he'd work with us, see what we could do to help that grant or not. And then the other piece of that, it had a discussion, Silver Cliff did pass their study. They're gonna do the study for the broadband. So I did talk with Kathy Clark up there, she was there, which is good. She's the, brought the USDA, the Department of Agriculture's director, in control of the, all the broadband initiatives, the money that they have. She and her sidekick, and I can't remember her name. They were very excited to work with us, especially if we look at this as a community. Custer County, the towns, et cetera, it's not just about Silver Cliff. I don't think, I don't think Silver Cliff could win it with, just by themselves personally. We'll have to see. But I asked her if she'd be willing to come down and talk to us in a workshop of some kind, and get the two mayors together, and see if there's potential to team up and apply for that, which gives us a hard point of fiber into the towns, which in fact, if we do the towers at some point, we need connectivity. We don't need CCOM giving us a wireless, which is what it's coming down to right now. So it may all work out in the end, we'll see. And so that meeting's there, and then I guess that's all I need to talk about. I'm tired.
Okay. Jim, first, I attended the Lincoln Day Dinner down in Wetmore. The Central Republican Committee sponsored that. Obviously, I just got back last night from the CCI convention in Keystone. Came away with a couple of thoughts. One, I'm glad that our county doesn't seem to struggle with the same things that a lot of counties in the state are, particularly larger counties. I just felt blessed that we don't have to deal with.
That's for sure.
A lot of the stuff that other counties do, dealing with marijuana, there's just a lot of things those larger counties.
Mushrooms.
And so we went through, one of the sessions, we went through a brief overview of a lot of the legislation that came out of the last session that just ended. And I couldn't help but sit there and think, 600 pieces of legislation came out of the session.
Incredible.
And I thought, "It is not gonna be long before, we are just like California. We're gonna legislate ourselves to death. We're gonna be a tyrant, tyranny of a state that nobody can do anything." I mean, it almost, I get the feeling that they go into this session and with the objective of, "Let's pass as many laws as we can." Doesn't matter if they make any sense, doesn't matter if they're really needed. It's just mind-boggling to me, the direction the state of Colorado is going when it comes to enacting laws, and they're just ludicrous.
And I mentioned one of those that we heard, you and I. This late scout, Commissioner from, I don't remember which county, got up because there's a landfill requirement on leaching, and it's like .00035 parts per million, whatevers it is, which is 1,000 times less than the drinking water in Denver. And she pointed that out.
I'm kidding.
No. And it's, so you're passing legislation without understanding the practical impacts of what you're asking, because she said it will break our county to go back and fix that. How you gonna dig that up and line it and do whatever you're gonna do to meet that silly requirement that is ludicrous? And that was one of seven. We've heard, we heard several others. Think of that.
They had a session on marijuana and him, and one of the commissioners got up and asked the presenter, "How many FTEs have been created to state level in the last six years since marijuana legislation was passed?" And she didn't quite understand the question, the presenter didn't, so she said, "Well, it's actually 30." And she, the presenter, was really answering the question of how many new FTEs were created since the beginning of this legislation session to deal with the laws being passed. But in the last six years, they've created 204.
Government positions.
Employment positions to deal with marijuana. There is a book now, you may have seen it, Counselor, it's probably, it's probably about this thickness, this size. It's strictly the statutes for marijuana. Certainly bigger than, than some of these, and they had a copy of it there. Just incredible. And I'm so thankful that this county and our two municipalities voted against as much marijuana as they could. Obviously, we had a bunch of it crammed down our throat by the voters along the front range, but it's just sad to me to sit there and listen to all the stuff that this state is doing to our citizens. And I don't know, it wasn't a very pleasant takeaway for me from that conference, but as I was walking out, another guy stopped me, and he said, "Man, I just can't believe how we are legislating ourselves to death." And I said, "Just exactly what I was thinking."
Which really points out it's a good thing, that we need to do, not a good thing. It's a hard thing. We gotta get involved up there more with the counties, do they? In some cases, while the legislature's in session, you can impact it if there's enough voice. But that's hard. We're outgunned by the population.
Right. That's where Action 22 could really come help us. They're a great lobbying organization.
Yes, they are.
And they're very conservative in my mind.
Concerned, and we're concerned. Action 22 guys are, they're working it. And there's also, and we're already a member, and I'm gonna find out more about this, this NACO membership, which we already pay 400 a year for, which I, nobody's attending in that, but I did talk.
I throw that magazine away every time I go.
Yeah, I do, too. But what it points out is really how you get help and understand what the feds are pushing, so that if you do work with the state, you understand it, instead of getting the wind blowing up your skirts, you know, and what's going on. So anyway, it's something we're paying the membership, we probably ought to pay a little attention to it.
Yeah, NACO's annual convention this year is in Las Vegas, so it's a little closer, a little Kentucky-ish.
It's in the middle of the summer, I think.
Since you guys went to Breckinridge, I'm gonna go to Vegas.
You go to Vegas, and I'll send you with $2. And I want you to mark it.
I'm teasing. I'm not going.
You may not want to tell them that you throw their magazine away.
Well, that's after I read every single word and memorize most of it.
Remember, you're on record now.
Yeah, so, and there were some other good presentations. Some of them weren't really applicable to what we deal with here in this county, because there's just a lot of stuff dealing with I-70 corridor and that, but I think it was worthwhile. I'm glad I went, so.
Yeah, I am, yeah. And glad, not only from a presentation point of view, but I was able to talk to people like Brazil and even Sally Cluck.
Right.
Good to, good to get in.
We did not, it was not brought up in any session that I sat in at this CCI convention, but I just want to throw out that I do sincerely believe we, as county commissioners, have got to get on top of this short-term rental situation before we get swamped. I did talk with individuals up there about how they're dealing with short-term rentals and what their impacts are, and so on and so forth, so, but it was not, there wasn't a session or presentation on it. Go ahead.
If I may, sir. West Cliff is also dealing with this issue, and there is an ordinance that was written for the trustees to consider, that deals specifically with that. It's patterned after Leadville, who has a very good, I felt, a very good ordinance. So at least, West Cliff is dealing with, if you like, I could bring in that proposed ordinance and maybe share it with counsel.
What's it solve?
What it does is it makes it, it makes it incumbent upon anybody who rents their short-term rentals 30 days or less, anybody who is in that business, they can be fined and they're in violation of the town law, and for the West Cliff, of course, by not registering and not paying the proper taxes.
The owner.
To have it inspected, to make sure that there's enough fire extinguishers, that there's the wastewater treatment system is sufficient to handle however many people they're gonna have, make sure there's, you guys know, in case of emergency. It's mostly a safety issue, but it's also a tax revenue to make sure that anybody who is doing that is following the regulations, so.
Even out in the country, that's why we need to take a look at it.
In West Cliff, it's just the town, obviously, but if the county's interested in learning more about it, we certainly could do that. And it was really brought up more as not a, I don't know, we just finished talking about regulation, regulation. The real question was, what the concern was from the trustees was safety, you know, do we know if there's fire extinguishers? Those kind of things they're worried about.
Yeah, I was just sitting here thinking, Commissioner Prince, while you were talking here, I'm gonna talk out of both sides of my face, because I just mentioned that I was overwhelmed by legislation, and I am at state level, no question. I don't know that we are anywhere close to being inundated in the county with legislation like they are at the state level, but the principle's the same, and I guess I'll take my lumps for that, but if it's, if it's appropriate and necessary, I don't have a problem with legislation, particularly at the county level. I don't think we can just stick our head in the sand and just ignore stuff, so certainly would appreciate you bringing in that. I'm gonna work on some stuff. Jackie Hobby is getting some documentation from some surrounding counties. It's just amazing when you talk to these commissioners about the unintended consequences of these short-term rentals, especially when people intentionally buy property for that as an investment. And without a whole lot of regard, I think one of the biggest things we're gonna find in our county is septic systems. I pulled up the onsite wastewater treatment systems, regs to go through those. I think generally people believe that septic systems are rated by the number of bedrooms, which they are, but there's a caveat to that, that in our wastewater treatment regs, it's tied to the number of people per bedroom as well, so listing a property to rent, short-term rental, to house 20 people, according to these regs, should have 10 bedrooms, eight to 10 bedrooms. Well, we know that's not happening, so I just think we're gonna have to take a long, hard look at that and start getting on top of that, so I would appreciate it.
I emailed to the three of you this afternoon what West Cliff is considering. They have not voted on it, hasn't even come up for a vote yet, but it's sitting there in the wings, waiting for them to discuss.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good starting point. It's certainly not gonna be applicable to us in every aspect, because most of them are on city, sewer, where county's probably gonna be on septic and individual wells. There's no question in my mind that a short-term rental property being used in that regard is a business. It's a commercial business, and I believe they're gonna have to have a special use permit, so not dreaming up new stuff, but I think they need to follow the rules that everybody else does, so just, just a thought. Anything else, gentlemen? Okay, we'll move on. Upper Arkansas Conservancy District report. Only thing I had to report was to remind us that the next regular meeting of the Conservancy District and their Water Enterprise is June 13th, starting at 1:00. And it will be Mike Shields' first meeting as a seated board member, so.
What day?
June 13th, Thursday, I guess, sir.
In that note, I will not be attending that meeting. I'm going to be on vacation from the 12th through the 18th. So I sent a note to Mike Shields, congratulating him on being appointed, and told him I'd look forward to it, but unfortunately, I will not be there.
12 through the?
14. I'll be back for the San Isabel meeting. And I'll be, I'll be doing several meetings via phone conference, but I won't be here live person. My grandson turns three.
Four.
Sorry, four.
So our next meeting is the 19th.
Correct. I'll be back for the San Isabel.
But you'll be out of town 12 through the 14th.
That's correct, sir.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, on that Upper Ark, the only thing I have that I got, we did have that meeting, they haven't gotten the minutes back, I'm gonna disseminate those so that everybody knows. A meeting that was open. They also have the dates that they wanna get the USGS, remember we were talking about that water study? And they're available on the 17th and the 24th of July is when they're thinking of having us do it, that over here, probably at Ranchers Roos, and I'll see what makes sense to bring them in here. Those are both Wednesdays, to make sure that all the water users have an understanding of what the, what the water is and what the water balance study of the future is headed toward and all that stuff that they're doing.
Any possible dates again?
17, 24.
Next one?
July.
Yeah, we have a commissioner meeting on the 17th, and the 24th.
I don't think it's open. Look at that.
Yeah, and I think it's.
We'll have to pick a time of the day to do it. We can do it on either day, get them over here. Oh, I think they would like to do it at 10, they said.
Yeah, that wouldn't work for us on the 17th, so. Yeah, and I, and you mentioned it, Commissioner Kanda, I think it's important for us to make sure everybody understands that that USGS study was done and paid for by Upper Ark, and it really was a study on water balance. It doesn't have anything to do with the augmentation plan or.
Right.
Anything else, totally a separate, whole separate ballgame, so.
It outlines all the, it was very informational, all the wells that they're monitoring, the USGS is, not Upper Ark, but paid for, and they use that data. All right, thanks, that's all I had on that.
Turning up?
I met with Jackie Hobby yesterday to talk about various things, but one of the things was the short-term rentals and VRBOs, and she and Vic are talking about presenting this to the Plining Commission, doing a thorough study, and we obviously need to coordinate on that and have them do their work on it and come up with, because I agree with you, that is gonna become more and more of a problem here. I also agree that the legislation that comes out, it's just, it's ridiculous. I have seen so many criminal laws that come out, and they think, "Well, job well done for them," and I have, for example, the, you know, magazine capacity law that was passed a few years ago. I've never heard of one instance where that's ever been prosecuted, you know? They think they're doing a great job, and so much of it's just ridiculous.
Brand business, that's the state.
The only law I'd like to see from them actually would be a law that says a moratorium on any new legislation. on any new legislation for about five years.
Limit every one of their terms.
Yeah, and also that for any new law they pass after that, they have to get rid of two old laws. You know, there are just so many ridiculous laws on the books.
Kids getting Christmas presents, man. One come in, two got to go out. It's just ridiculous.
And the other thing, I mean, I agree also that Colorado's becoming more and more like California. The next thing we're going to have is a real serious homeless problem, like you've been seeing on TV, people living in tents on the street. That's going to start happening. It already is in Denver. Absolutely going to get out of control in Orlando. But that's all I had for this, our last meeting.
Yeah, you know, we had Senator Crowder and Representative Wilson at dinner down there in Wetmore and they both spoke. Senator Crowder got up and we've been around him much, he knew nonsense really. He said, "Look, I'm not... I'm not going to stand up here and lie to you, man. This trouble's in... This state's in a lot of trouble." There was nothing good came out of the last session. Six... 584 bills or whatever it was. And he said, "I'm telling you, none of them, in my opinion, as a Republican conservative, none of them were good for the state." He said, "It's just mind-boggling." He said, "I'm sorry, I wished I could tell you there's some neat stuff going on." He said, "There isn't." He said, "It was a battle to survive it and I don't mean to get on Democrat versus Republican, but hey, we're talking about politics here, right? That's what drives it." And obviously it's a Democratic-led majority up there and he said, "It was just amazing to see how bold the Democrats were at making a run at some of this legislation that just didn't make any sense at all." Representative Wilson followed up and said, "You know, I'm not going to disagree with anything that Senator Crowder said." And he said, "There's just no light at the end of the tunnel until something changes drastically in our state." So I don't consider myself a radical Republican and I hope there's a lot of Democratic people in our county that don't consider themselves radical Democrats either. There's got to be some normal ground, not middle ground, man, just something that's normal and realistic and so hopefully we'll get there. But boy, they were... And obviously Wilson's in his last term and they cannot find anybody. They have not found one person willing to step up and run for his seat in the House of Representatives, so we'll see. But, all right, thank you, sir. Admin assistant?
May I ask a question, please?
Yes.
A gentleman came in yesterday, because we're talking about admin, mentioned to me I had an issue with one of the roads. I told him that Road Bridge was on the agenda for this morning. He said he was going to leave a note with you. No, okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we presented his concern if he had one.
Hey, I've been...
He doesn't leave it?
We don't have one.
Okay, sorry, sir.
That's all right. Public comment? Yes, ma'am?
A couple items. One, real quick, just on marijuana and hemp. So one of the pieces of legislation that went through, as you probably are aware, it was discussed at this conference, is outside investment is now allowed here in the state of Colorado. So that is definitely... I've been following the industry. It is definitely going to change kind of the landscape of what that looks like here. It already has. There's already been big deals penciled and there's consolidation going on within the industry itself, so it will change what's going on here in Colorado more than anything else that we've ever seen up to this point. And then on short-term rentals, I did just want to touch on this because this is something that has come to affect us personally. So we live out in unincorporated Custer County, kind of in the Bear Basin, Dilly Ranch area. We live down a private undeveloped road that there's no HOA. There wasn't even electricity down the road. We brought it in on an easement. The property right next to us, some folks who live in the area as well, bought that property. It wasn't even on the market, actually, so this is another thing that people are doing is they're writing the owners of vacant land. And so they're able to snatch up these properties at nowhere near market price for the purpose of putting up some slapdash little cabin that they, I mean, they've told us, you know, we're not even building a foundation, it's going to basically be a stick-type house that they only plan to rent out in the summertime, basically. But with us living down a private road, the county doesn't come down and maintain it. My husband and our little Mahindra tractor are the ones who maintain this road. It's us and there's two other couples who live down this road full-time. The rest of the parcels are mostly vacant and there's a couple of part-timers who live in Pueblo and the surrounding areas. We're the ones that maintain the road. We do snow removal. They're now demanding an electrical easement from us to put up this cabin. And again, to your point, Mr. Flower, it's absolutely a commercial property and they're going to be allowed or get away with, you know, paying the much lower residential...
Where was that exactly?
So it's in an area called Silver Cliff Heights. We are, if you take County Road 271 to 265 to 264, it's out there. This is one of the more rural areas of Custer County, if you will. Most of us who live out there, we live in campers, you know? We came out here to be away from HOA renters, city people. We're worried about fire risk, you know, city people who come in and don't understand fire.
They all 40-acre pieces.
These are 10-acre pieces, yes. So we're worried about fire risk. The trash companies won't even come down there because we've got an interesting pitch off of the county road down to our main road, so it's pack in and pack out. I haul our trash to the landfill about once a month. We're not convinced that the owners of this property and especially their renters are going to understand this and its importance and things like that. We definitely have coyotes and bears in the area. So it hits close to home and we're upset about it just because of how it encroaches on ours as well as the fact that we came down here to Custer County to escape kind of all of this. And we've been down here a little over a year and here it is following us, so...
Yeah, you bring up a great point, you know? There are a myriad of reasons why people moved to Custer County, no question. Unfortunately, there's no guarantee that those reasons are always going to be true and accurate. I mean, your reason for coming here may never change, but the circumstances surrounding all of us probably will change. I think as a commissioner, one of my responsibilities is try to mitigate some of the changes that we can and that we believe is right and fair for the people who live in this county.
Yeah. So special use permits, I mean, I'm not one for just supporting, you know, regulation for the sake of regulation, but I don't think in this case that's what we're doing. It's not for the sake of regulation, it's to preserve.
But that's a good point. That's your first stop is the Planning Commission.
Yeah. I mean, we're doing it. We've got a home occupation permit for my husband's business and everything like that and I'd just like to see everyone else kind of understand and not be able to take advantage, I guess.
Yeah, and he's just throwing something together and renting it out for the summer. I think we're going to have some serious issues with that because obviously sanitation and water is going to be a big deal.
It's our short-term rental issue, right?
Well, and if it's for the summer, you know, for the entire summer, that takes it out of short-term rental.
But I'm guessing they want short-term renting during the summer period. 30 days, maximum of 30 days is short-term, so... Another thing I want to challenge the Planning and Zoning Commission, I don't know, I'm going to refer this to council eventually in an email. I always thought, before I became a commissioner, a special use permit, you apply for it, it's for your special use, you get it, and then that gets revisited, but it is a lifetime thing, a special use permit. Now, they do go through a review if there's any complaints, but I just struggle with granting an SUP to anybody for the rest of eternity, for impertuity. I get it that people may invest heavily based on that SUP. They might build a building, they might develop a business.
It depends.
But to never come back in front of the county commissioners again, I just, I struggle with that a little bit.
If they're conforming with what they signed up to, the only thing that would get them back here would be something that's out of compliance.
Yeah, typically only if it's a neighbor telling on a neighbor.
Right, somebody's got to police it.
We don't have any...
Enforcetation, isn't it?
In policing or enforcing, really, I don't think I could be wrong, but...
That's maybe an issue.
Yeah, so... Yeah, I mean, we're obviously living in times of great change and it doesn't necessarily... And I got this feeling up at that conference that we're just going to lay down like a rock in a string bed and have this stuff wash over us, that nobody's ever going to question it. I wanted to stand up and ask if there was any county willing to submit legislation, bring forth legislation to do with all the marijuana laws in Colorado. See, the mentality now is, I certainly picked up on it, is, oh, hell, this is it. Now, this is like breathing air from now on. This is what... And same with the Gallagher and I said, "Is anybody going to challenge that?" "No, God, no. What do you think? You're crazy? What, are you a comedian?"
But you could, I mean, there's...
Well, sure, you can, but the mentality and the ideas that I got was, yeah, now we're going to have to...
Like limits to the sea.
But they're willing to challenge table? Because they don't like that one.
Right.
Well, there might be enough ground swept.
But they'll be the first to tell you, until things change in the metropolitan and the population centers, they're going to control whatever, so anyhow, thank you, sir.
Okay, so do you understand what your issue, what your... You presented it to us.
I do, yeah. I just kind of wanted you guys to understand from, like, having, hearing a personal story of how this is definitely affecting us.
And you're going to go work it now?
Well, we're, I mean, we're working, we're trying to work with these people. They're not being very reasonable, to be honest with you.
I mean, that, I mean, you know, work with the planning and zoning guys.
I'd love to talk to them. Any conversations I can have to express all of that, you know?
Go in there and talk to her today, while you're here.
Yep, lots has changed and, you know, respectfully, the building permit increase, that definitely hit us as well.
She acts on reports.
The assessment.
The fee, the building permit fee increase that was recently voted upon.
Yeah, I would encourage you to either talk to Jackie Hobby in Planning and Zoning or contact Vic Barnes and ask him to get on their agenda.
Sure.
I don't know when their next meeting is, but I suspect based on this whole short-term rental issue that they're going to schedule a meeting here in the next month or so. They don't meet regularly, they meet when they need to, but Vic Barnes is his name and I'll give you his number after the meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, other public comment? Then we'll move on. I don't know how far or fast we'll move because our next...
Well, so I just realized, he's on vacation.
Okay.
And so he... He can do his report on the 28th since 19, since San Isabel. And I don't know where.
Um...
I thought we knew he was going to go. I thought we talked a little bit about something else.
Yes, ma'am.
We have his report.
Laura's going to come down too.
Okay. So if you guys want to look through that, certainly can, or we can...
Unless he has issues, I thought the report was certainly sufficient for me to understand that things are going along just fine and I don't feel, unless you feel differently, I didn't think it was really necessary for him to come in to tell us what's already on here.
Well, I would have expected it if he was here and in town. I don't know that it's critical for him to travel to San Isabel to do this, but certainly I think when they're on the schedule and we're meeting here, that he should be here. But I'm like you, I didn't see anything in here that was an eye raiser, so...
Excuse me, ma'am, do you have coffee for everybody?
Could you come?
What you got?
We can open that door.
Good, fast.
Kind of coffee you've got going out there.
Pretty quiet, so...
I know we had Starbucks in the hallway.
All right, so...
How are you, sir?
I'm doing good.
I've been concerned about you.
Mark Howard reported.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Got a lot of people concerned about my mental health.
And, you know, they've met you, we all understand why.
What an award, didn't we?
I'm always concerned about you, Kim.
I was in the hallway talking to somebody and during our banquet at CCI, they were giving the Cstat awards, but I got caught out in the hallway, so I didn't hear the beginning of it, but...
We thought you were going to be the most improved.
How in the world could I be the most improved?
When you're already the best. When I got an award last time.
I always thought probably...
I know, we weren't ready to pat you on the back again and it never came up.
Oh, I got a certificate.
Yeah, I know you did.
Yeah.
Screw up for a few years and then you'll be eligible again.
Well, yeah, but I got one last year, EBL, because Reggie Beaker had come down and do this big presentation and bring cupcakes. And then, so then I get one this year and they just sent it to me and that's just dandy, so I hope I don't...
Well, they did go through and give plaques to people and they went up on the stage and got the picture taken.
Seventeen of them did, plus one special one, I guess.
Oh, yes, and it was a big discussion at our last directors' meeting that I was at, which was in May, but what is today, June? I was May, about some of the counties don't like the way the Cstat measures are being done, mostly at some of the bigger counties or something, I don't know.
Well, there seems like some of that.
So they were going to, now they've been having a big discussion with counties on how they should change the Cstat measures. If you want to participate, you can, I don't know how time goes where you talk about how we're going to change Cstats, I can tell you right now. All the counties, like Pueblo County, who's worried about it, deal with that. That's all I got to say about that. I feel like Forrest Gump. That's all I got to say about that.
Like a box.
Chocolate, yes, or something, I don't know. Okay.
Forrest Lockhart.
Yeah, yes, there we go. Now, this is for April because we haven't, I haven't done May yet because I'm just done with May, you know? But you already did that. I looked at that and thought, oh, my gosh, and I'm like, no. I mean, I'm confused as to what month I made it, but that's how bad it is, you know? I don't even know what month I made. So if you look at the front sheet, we're fine, 10. If you look at it, we're at zero. That's because we've used all of our money because we only contribute so much and then the rest is picked up, so that looks weird, but that's how that is. Okay. And then old age pensions, the next one, and we're, that's just pass-through and we're okay on that. Leap, I don't even know if we're going to have another payment in May, we made. April was, it ends in April, leap does, but anybody that applies at the end of April will have a May payment, so we're about done with leap for the year.
And then it won't start up again until the fall?
It doesn't start up again until November 1st, that's when the first payment comes out. Okay. And then Medicaid Transportation's just pass-through and that February one where we looked at, well, where it's got the 10 payments and then we only did the 628. I looked at that again and it's correct, so it was probably Rotary or somebody that had a lot of mileage on there and so, because I thought, let me look at that again, but that's exactly what it is.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, and Community Service Block Grant, we still got money in there, which is good. ELC, I just got done, I had to finish up the grant, got it in the mail, so I won't know anything about that and they'll let us know on that, but I got the grants, it's done. It should be fine. Should be, but you never know. We'll see what they do with it. And then our food assistance for April was up quite a bit, because, yeah, not quite a bit, but a bit. So we're, now we're into the summer months, so we should start seeing a decline in that, so...
So in April, if I get this right, and if I don't, you certainly correct me quickly, you distributed $52,000 worth of assistance in food.
Uh-huh.
Food, not gas, not tires, not...
Only food benefits, only food, to 243 households.
Is that restricted to alcohol?
They can't, they can't buy any of that, that's my fault. No, no pet food, no any of that type of stuff, no laundry soap, it has to be a food product.
Now, that is not food you hand out.
Oh, no, no, no.
That is the card.
That's going to the grocery stores and...
And that's how much?
52,425.
In one month?
Yes.
For 243 households.
243 households. Yep, yep. And then, yeah, because the commodities that we have on the next page, we gave, in April, we served 25,000.
So that, let me back up real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry, while you were talking about that, so...
I'm still on Snap. So that averages $215 per household for the month of April. So 52,000 seems like a ton of money, but 215...
When you divide it by 243.
And then figure there's three, four people in a family, that's reasonable.
Well, yeah, I think our county, our household residents average is 2... Well, yeah, I think our county, our household residence average is two point three people per house, that's ninety-three bucks per person.
We can have some benefits as low as fifteen dollars, fifteen's the lowest we do. We have some that are fifteen and then we have so much higher depending on the number of people in the household, that type of stuff, and the income to the household.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And again, then, the TFAB, yeah, we did twenty-five households last, last month, or in April. And, yeah, that just shows it that way.
How many, twenty-five?
Twenty-five. Twenty-five.
Yeah, see, serving forty people, so.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, it holds fairly true, doesn't it?
Yep. We have, yeah.
One point six people, but, so it's a little under the county average there. And those do come out of your storage building here?
That comes out of the, that comes out of the storage area there, yes.
And total value, or is?
Well, yeah, they send me a thing that shows this is the value of the commodities they gave us. But some of the stuff is, we don't count, is like the bread, because that's not a TFAB thing. It's just leftovers, I don't know what it is, but they, they count it as non-TFAB.
And do you carry over some of your canned goods from one month to the next, or do you?
Most of the time I give it all out and so that it's gone and we don't have to count it and store it and do all of that stuff with it, so.
So the number of eight hundred and forty distribution out numbers?
That's a weird thing, and I'd have to look, oh, I'd have to have that form in front of me to tell you what that is. Oh, it's, uh, it's a number in poundage, the amount of pounds that, that we get.
Oh, that's not numbers, that hashtag, not numbers, that's pounds.
Yeah, it's pounds, and that, I'm like, eight hundred and forty pounds is what we've got in. And the value was two hundred and seventy-nine eighty and we served, you know, the cans and stuff, depending on what you have, it's gonna weigh more than some things, so.
TE on TFAB stands for?
Temporary emergency.
Emergency.
Yeah.
Food assistance program.
Yeah, yep, food assistance program. So we'll be getting May's or June's, June's and next Monday, and I don't even remember what we're getting, but we're getting something. Yeah.
No anomalies?
Nope. No anomalies.
Personal issues working out okay?
Yes.
Great.
Yes. No.
Just make it fair, everybody's happy.
No, no, everybody's happy. Kayla was at training for three days, uh, for the, uh, child support, uh, annual conference, and so it was in Colorado Springs, so she went to that for two months.
Stacy's knee okay? She backed up a hundred percent?
Oh, no, no, no. What they do with that, she had an appointment in May, the end of May, it is like getting a transplant. So they have to measure her bone, then they put her on a list, and so when a bone comes available, then she'll go in. So we have no idea when that's coming down the pipe. Yeah, we just thought they'd have one or something, you know, but no, they actually measured the bone. She goes, I did not know that, and I was, well, I certainly did not, so she'll get the-
They're gonna find one that fits?
Yeah, so, cause I told her we could just use a deer bone and, yeah, we had a lot-
We have plenty of pig bones from last night.
Yeah.
No, but I could've.
We had a lot of ideas and she goes, I just figured they'd have a bone and they just scheduled me and I'd go in and do it, but no. So, and you only have a certain amount of time to get it done, just like any other type of transplant.
Unbelievable what they can do.
Isn't, isn't that?
When you think about what they're doing, it's incredible.
They, they don't want to do a total knee replacement, cause she's too young, but they have to fix this. And the other, yesterday she hit it on a chair and she said, I-
Screaming bloody muck.
You learned some-
Well, no, she was in court, no, and she said, I thought I was just gonna break out in tears.
Yeah.
And I said, I'll bet you did, I'll bet you did. Uh, the only thing I have, and Fonda's doing Greg and everything else, is Greg is no longer gonna be our attorney because of personal reasons, starting, well, sometime next week. And so we've got, he's, uh, he recommended somebody, we've already met with them, and so they're gonna start next week, so uh, we're gonna contract signed with them and everything else, and so, um-
What's his name?
Greg Wade Kayla.
No, Dan Slater.
Dan, I don't know Dan.
Dan Slater.
And where's he from?
He's from Fremont, uh, from Canyon.
He'll travel back and forth.
He, um, was, um, the attorney for Fremont County GHS, him and Rocco McConie were for about a year. And then Fremont County now has three attorneys that they just have in-house. And so, but this guy's done child support, the APS, and child welfare, so he knows it all, yeah. Yeah, he, when we got, when we called him and he just said, yeah, I'll just come up, and so he met with us and then, but he's on vacation right now, which is fine. But I think he's coming up next week and we're gonna get stuff worked out, so just wanted to let you know, okay?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll see you next time.
See ya.
Next time, next time.
Didn't you even give me a chance to bid?
Well, you're the county attorney.
Well, I can do both.
Can you?
You could make me a better offer, these guys are gone.
Oh, 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 okay, well, I just thought you can't do that, you're the county attorney.
Moonlight, in moonlight.
You know.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Road and Bridge, hello, sir.
How are you?
How are you?
Good.
Hey, Gary. Good morning, Gary, how are you?
Morning, good, how are you?
See ya, Gary.
How are you?
Thanks for coming in.
Sure.
Be careful in that seat.
Oh, yeah.
Not the seat itself, the position.
That's some pretty pictures of that bridge, huh?
Yeah, that's that tree that is in question down there, I don't even know if you've seen it or not, but-
Yes, we have.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then there's one on the other side, but, uh, I think while we're down there, we probably have to take care of it.
Yeah, I'm looking at that big old root knob sticking out there.
Yeah. It's just something that's gonna catch debris and cause us some grief.
Yeah, it is sticking out there by itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, certainly not gonna hurt to get that tree out of the overhead lines that are up in there as well, huh?
Yeah, I'm surprised though.
Somebody hadn't jumped all over that.
Where the, uh, utility boys have been pruning, you know, they, they usually catch those.
Well, they're not power lines, that's the thing, I don't know exactly what they are.
They're communication lines, if they are, just phone lines, so they're, I guess they're not-
Phones don't work anyway?
Yeah, they don't work.
Yeah.
Why bother?
I don't know what the deal is.
So what do you think?
Oh, I think that, uh, sure, there's another one there. Uh, we can take it out, we're gonna have to probably rent that genie lift that, uh, Valley Ace has got. Cause we'll wanna be kinda careful with this communication lines, plus there's a couple limbs that are kinda overhanging that building. And I did talk to the property owner, he said we can get it.
Who is that property owner? Do you remember that all?
He just gave me his first name and I don't recall.
I was gonna research that, I guess I can while we're sitting here. Yeah, you think we can reach over that bridge and jerk that root ball out of there without a track hole?
Actually, I'd like to leave the root ball there, I'd like to take it off, cut it maybe about five or six inches above ground level. Cause it kinda stabilizes that bank. If we leave it there along with the roots and stuff, you know, if we get big water, it'll help keep it from washing out.
Take out the majority of the knob that's causes the problem, right?
Yeah, everything from this point up that's gonna catch debris and choke off that stream flow right there underneath that bridge. Same way with the other side, if we, uh, if we get to tackle it, we'll just take it off just above ground level. And I bet Larry and Kevin's probably got a place down there where we can take the limbs and stuff. Initially, I was just gonna run it through the chipper and bring it up here, but-
Talked about that, I think they'll take it.
Yeah, I checked with Valley Ace and they're pretty reasonable on their chipper rental rate, but they're, it's got a blown head gasket, so.
It's cotton?
I'm not sure, no, it's not like, uh, it almost looks like, well, I'm not sure, it's some kind of-
It looks like a-
It's got real small.
Almost looks like a willow sort of family member, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, I'm not certain.
I don't think we need a motion, do you, or that?
Um.
Well, that we did, didn't we?
Well, it's just kind of a road and bridge, maybe, since it's what we did, since it's our bridge, it's our road, so we just go down and do the maintenance on it and get rid of the tree and be done with it, so we can go for it.
Yeah, I mean, I think obviously their big concern was the, the base of the tree is a snag area. Uh, I think we have other concerns to go along with it over the building up into the communication lines and so on and so forth, so.
Yeah, I, I think if it choked off that string flow, their concerns, and I'd be concerned too, if I had that house over there on the, on the side towards the north, cause it'll put the water down into the air pipe, so.
Okay, so you, you think you can get that on the calendar and deal with it, huh?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, exactly.
General timeframe?
I'm guessing week after next.
Okay, so within the next month?
Yeah.
Before the bigger water comes?
Yeah, I just don't wanna put it, push it too far out and then something happen, cause it's not gonna be good for me. Since I'm aware of it, it's almost like that stopped.
Somebody may say something, I'm just guessing.
That's a possibility.
And, uh, I wanted to thank you for the handicap stuff down here, they were tickled pink, and got a call.
Yeah, they, uh, they, I don't have the picture with me of how they grabbed it, but I guess I didn't. But they, uh, yeah, they were down there when we did that and they were pretty pleased with it.
Were they watching, were they?
Yeah. Kind of. Yeah, it turned out real nice.
Yeah, it did, thanks.
Sure. We got a transmission that went out on one of our John Deere motor graders, so when you see that invoice come through, it's gonna be-
An old one?
No, it's, it's the newest machine, one of the newest machines we got, it's no way-
How many hours?
About eleven thousand. Yeah, unfortunately, that particular year in John Deere, they didn't build a real solid transmission and-
Did they fix the, did they fix it after that, is the repair gonna include something better?
Well, I hope it's an up, well, there is some updates on that transmission, actually, but we're gonna have to pay for those too, so it's an added expense, but that transmission, I'm not gonna be surprised if it didn't come in around forty-five thousand dollars.
Got it in your budget?
And we know, we don't have it in our, in our equipment repair, yeah, we're gonna have to cut back in other areas and conserve in order to be able to pay for it. It's one of those deals where we need the machine, so it's either park it by the fence or fix it, and we hate to-
You gotta be neat then.
Yeah, we, especially before the end of the year, you know, when we do snow removal, so it's one of our six-wheel drive machines. It is what it is, I guess.
Do you happen to know the year of it?
It's an early. Yeah.
Did you say that and I was?
Yes.
I was trying to find out the landowner by the bridge there while you were walking, so I'm sorry.
Real pleasant guy.
You know, just yesterday I got a call unsolicited about someone who wanted to sell me vehicle insurance, maybe.
And we are working on Kettle Lane.
I saw that.
Yeah, we're building that maybe up and-
Any chance of remitting out those borrowed ditches?
Yeah, I'd like to do that immediately, and the reason for that is I took a laser level out there and everything flows to the north just below Mike Shields, that there's a culvert that takes, carries the water underneath the road. Everything flows that way and because of all that buildup in that ditch on the west side, it's got everything choked off, so it's pushing the water in the hay field.
Right, can't even get to the culvert, can it really?
Not only that, it's bubbling up in the middle of the road, getting soft in the-
Yeah, we'll take care of that.
The road on both sides.
Yeah.
I saw that Mike had cleaned out that ditch that you're talking about right there below the house.
Yeah.
And there's another culvert back down to the south, right about midway between that, so.
That one you're talking about, we went in and cleaned it yesterday, it's funny you mention that, I was running a pipe that we flush it with, you know, and anyway, I ran against something, so I pulled the pipe out and I was gonna put my head down there to see what was going on, and one of the guys said, hey, I just saw a nose come out of there. So I got out of the ditch and about that time a skunk come running out of there. I'm glad he saw it.
Glad you saw the nose part.
Yeah.
You know what, we're glad. Hang them up with that skunk yesterday, we might've been doing this over the phone.
Probably, so I doubt if I'd have gotten rid of that smell.
No, probably not overnight.
Is there hope for that culvert that's, that we can get water actually going to it and under the road?
Well, the only time it serves a purpose is when we get a big rain. And the other one won't handle it, because it's actually a little bit higher than the stream flow itself, so, and it's only twelve inches in diameter. Yeah, I'm gonna get with Mike Shields and I'm gonna clear it with him and make sure he's okay with it, but I'd like to put a couple more culverts in there in case we get a big rain, since we're building the road up, we don't wanna see it being used as a dam, so if I put it, yeah.
If we don't do something, that's exactly what I was afraid would happen, is that we'd just get water built up against it.
Yeah, I wanna put a couple more culverts in there to handle some extreme water that comes from the west, and then I'd like to also get that ditch cleaned out, if we can get that. Cause if we don't clean the ditch out, the hay field that's on the west side with all this snow we've had through the winter, it's, it's not gonna dry out to where you can get in there and cut its hay, it'll stay-
Yeah, and I've looked at that road, the elevation of where you're working now is lower than up over the hill, but that next set of stretch of road stays fairly dry, it doesn't heave and near like that lower stuff does, so it's gotta be the inability of water to get out of that borrowed ditch.
That's a lot of it, it's just wicking through the material and then pumping right up into the middle of the road, so by putting that material in there that we've done and then cleaning that ditch out, you know, from this point forward, we won't see another problem in our lifetime, most likely.
Uh, where are you getting the material for that?
We've got some, uh, material that we cleaned out of ditches and such out here at the pit, it's just kinda junk material, it's got fair amount of road gravel and fines in it, plus large rocks, it works real well.
Well, one of the nearby landowners was very impressed, seeing those county trucks run all day long hauling material. He was excited, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, well, good. A couple other things, if I may, let you go do your stuff, then I've got a couple things I'd like to bring up, so whatever else you have.
Um, that E nine-one-one funding. How did you guys wanna handle that, are we gonna?
Uh, well, I think as it stands right now, the county's already paying about eighty percent of that.
Right.
Which covers you.
Okay. Well, I'm not disappointed to hear that.
Good luck, county.
Uh, and that's, I didn't make a big deal about that, but they kept talking six entities, well, two of those entities are county and we're already paying.
Right.
We really need four or five entities to pick up that twenty percent.
Yeah, otherwise we'd be paying, if it came out of Road and Bridge, we'd be paying double, I mean, more.
Right, and that, I mean, that was my general thought on it generally, I don't know what- but I, I looked at it as non-county slash or tax districts.
Okay, right.
So.
Works for me.
Hopefully, we'll see how that goes, we'll meet again when you have that discussion comes up, but, uh-
So I think Westcliffe's gonna try and do some more streets this year, and what we did and have done in the past is we, you know, supplied our equipment, we've gotten reimbursed for those efforts. Well, last year, they paid us for the rock and we used our rock and have our pile, but this year, I'd like them, Mike, to-
Who's them?
Chip Seal, yeah, West, the city of Westcliffe. I'd like Mike to, I'm gonna talk to Mike and see if he's okay with trying to find his own rock, maybe even going through the same source that we did to get our rock. And then I was gonna ask you guys if, uh, they're gonna need about two hundred ton, it's gonna be about eight belly dump loads, and we got ours from Mike Tzak out of the Tzak pit down here on fifty.
Or down, down one.
Yeah, between Cota Paxton and Texas Creek, but if they work out a deal with Mike Tzak to get that rock from him.
Dump it up here maybe?
What's that?
He would bring it up there.
Well, it's, like ours, we haul it, he doesn't include the hauling, and he may haul it for him, but, um-
You'd haul it for him?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, is if you guys are okay if we haul it for him and if, how you wanna handle the expense of it, if, if we charge him for the hauling.
Near labor, maybe, just time.
Right.
Well, I think it'd be nice if they wanted a contract with Tzak to haul it, but
Yeah, that'd be-
They may not wanna do that, cause he's gonna charge them all in the leg.
Charge them whatever they-
Yeah, probably so.
I don't, you can tell you should do it free grabs.
Well, in fact, we can legally, can't we?
Well, we could, but I mean, it's best-
No, I don't mean that, I mean from a point of view, the funds wise.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But you have to be reimbursed for it, according to me and your hours and, uh, not, not the machine, machinery's okay to use.
But as far as the labor.
As far as your hours and, uh, and if it costs fuel.
Mm-hmm, well, I didn't wanna do anything without visiting with you three and see how it made you-
That's a good deal for them, I mean, it's a big deal. That's a good deal for them, I mean, it's a big deal, think, if you've got the time to.
Yeah, I mean, we've got the time, it would just be a couple hours.
Belly dumps, how many loads?
Just eight loads, we run three trucks, so, you know, it'd be a half a day hauling, probably.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, we could work it in, it's between, we're gonna do our chip seal towards the end of July, around the twenty-second, I believe, so we've got time to, just spend three hours or whatever to run down and get it, if that's what we end up doing.
And there's time to work, and from what I understand, the rules are, we can have them put it into the general fund later and reimburse it.
Yeah.
County, you know, they don't have to cut a deal with them first, as long as they're willing to do it first.
Yeah, once again, I can talk to Mike about it and see how he wants to handle it, I'd prefer to just hang on to our rock and not selling it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should.
I would prefer for them to contract to have it hauled up here, but.
Yeah, I got a good price on it, I'd really like to hang on to it, because.
No, it's the P parcel.
But I'll do that, I'll talk to Mike and see how he.
You said you had a couple, I got two questions to ask him after you.
Go ahead. I think that's all I got.
Go ahead.
Let me ask, uh, two things, one was, I had a property owner in Crista Vista, it's three twenty-nine, Agua, Vista de Agualu. How far in there, did the county take any, they have road issues that, that used to be taken care of by the county, they claim, but it hasn't been over the last year or two, so maybe, can you look into that, where, where is the county obligation on that road?
There's, there's none.
Is there none going into that thing?
I don't know.
Off the highway, from the highway in, it's all the homeowners?
Now, Crista Vista goes south and north of highway.
Right, this is north of the highway.
Okay, no, it's, uh, it's just, it's on them, it's not a county.
So, the road.
Yeah, it's not a county owned road, so.
You must have contracted it to somebody, and they're confused about who owned what equipment from it.
Yeah, I owned a home over there up until a couple of years ago, and I bought it in like fourteen, and the whole time I owned that home, four or five years, you know, it was all on the homeowners to take care of, and it's on that road.
Uh, some cases, you know, you go in a certain way, and then everybody off the spurs have their obligation, or some cases, the subdivision.
Yeah, we don't take care of any of it.
Any in there, Crista Vista.
So the highway right there, the entrance, the rock entrance.
Yeah, it's kind of a loop, is what it is, and both, from the highway on both entrances.
This is a mile inside is where this address is located.
Yeah, that's from the highway in, it's all on them, so.
And what were they?
Well, the road's washboarded and needs a lot of repair, and it's a mess from the winter, you know.
Yeah, in fact.
Was it county responsibility?
That's what they want.
Yeah, when I owned a home out there, they, uh, some of the homeowners got together and they bought a motor grader, and then that's how they maintained their road, so. But, no, it's nothing to do with the county.
Okay, and then there was one, we all three got sent, and that was the, they were asking us who cleans up the bar pits and all that, what was that email, you remember that one, it's been about a week ago or a little more. Are we obligated to do anything? I couldn't find the email when I was just looking. Remember that one?
Uh, I remember getting the email, I don't remember who it was from.
It was all three of us, it was, it was a nice note, but it included a picture.
It wasn't a county issue, but I don't really know that.
I couldn't find it.
Yeah.
I couldn't remember the name, that's part of the reason. And we got tied up all last week, so.
Well, I got.
If we find out, I'm gonna ask you.
I got a call from an individual down at San Isabel that, uh, wanted some work under the road, and it's not even a county owned road, let alone a county maintained owned road, and. They couldn't understand why it was a road, something that carried public traffic, but county didn't have any responsibility on it, and, uh.
Happens a lot.
It does, I mean, just. Some of them are deemed as public access roads, but they're still.
They're access, but they're not maintained.
They're not county owned or county maintained either one, and he finally understood that, so he was asking me what he could do on the road, and I said, you're, we don't have a.
Do anything.
An opinion, one way or the other, because we don't own it.
Unless it's maintained by you, then they can't do something to ruin you being able to maintain it.
Well, you want to ask me if I, he could put a gate across it, and I said, I can't give an opinion one way or the other, because we don't have a stake in this, so.
Yeah, the trash thing was on Lake Dewey's Road.
That's what it was, yes.
I didn't have a name, because I just got an email address, and I sent back, and asked him to provide me a name. There's trash blowing in on the fence north of Myron Mullet's building, um.
Close.
Did we just discuss this, um, I mentioned, uh, no, maybe I dropped it, maybe I, I was thinking about.
Where's, where's that finished?
I don't know.
I had asked the sheriff and the court.
Cause a lot of that's on private.
The useful public service people could go out there.
That, we did, somebody mentioned.
I thought I remembered talking about that.
And they didn't want to do it, I, I need to talk to.
The sheriff was concerned because of the heavy traffic, that it wasn't safe to put people out there. I'm not making safety decisions, so I said, thank you.
Talk to Shannon.
But this is a, this is a lot going issue, because people coming and going from the lake, you know, sometimes they're not as cleanly as we would like them to be, let me put it that way.
You see those guys out?
But you know, having said that.
Not our guys.
Put roadwork signs up and put orange vests on them, the same thing that we do.
They're orange, they're, and they're orange.
Yeah, they did along.
They do it everywhere.
Even our state highways.
We have ordinance against littering, I mean, we could put signs up that you're subject to the following fine.
We ought to do that, I don't think we have any signs of.
That say.
Littering signs.
No, it's, I haven't seen anything in our.
We gotta talk to Jackie and find out.
Yeah, this person specifically asked for the tenants of the building, well, it's not on their property, that's the problem, according to this picture, the trash is blown in on the fence north of the.
Tell them where it's coming from.
North of their property, so.
But it happens, and, and I think that's a good use of, uh, the jail.
I do too, I think that, I think if I was in jail, I'd.
I'd get out anyway.
I'd look forward to the opportunity to get out and get some fresh air, honestly, it's an exercise.
Well, rather than, you know, do an exercise, I'm glad you're doing this.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, it's usually two for one.
I guess we, maybe they haven't talked lately, but we ought to probably talk to Shannon about it, so.
We'll be happy to sign them off, they can all do it medically.
So they're all healthy, huh? Good.
Anything else, sir? Couple things I wanted to visit with you about, one, I had a phone call about a culvert that apparently a blade got in tangled up at Snowy Peaks, Ruth Graham's. She said, she told me, she sent you an email about that, or a text message or something, I don't know, do you know the ranch I'm talking about? Snowy Peaks, top of what I call Top Hermit, I don't know what county road that is, but.
Yeah, I, we got a call from her yesterday, I haven't seen any email, but we got a call, so we're up there today.
Yeah, probably wasn't an email, I think she said she left you a message or something, but.
Yeah, she, Sherry took the message, I don't know if Sherry actually spoke with her in person, I mean, over the phone, or she just took a voicemail, but we're up there right now fixing it.
Okay, good, yeah.
So you think it happened during snowplow or something?
I would guess, yeah.
Yeah, that's what.
Into the culvert, tore a big chunk out and was standing up, I guess, uh, which they do, I know for a fact, personally, they do a lot of riding in and out of that entryway horseback.
Well, what she told us yesterday was, she's got some company coming up this weekend, and wouldn't know if we could fix it, she said it looks like a monster sticking up in the air. You know, out of respect for her, and it's pleasant, is what she was, I thought, well, go. So we're, we're up there this morning getting it fixed.
Yeah, I, I get it, that maybe a blade hand doesn't know, they snag into the end of a culvert.
That just happens too.
I would think they'd feel something when they got into that, but, and at least try to mash it back down right then and there, so it's not a hazard to tires or whatever, but thank you for doing that, yeah.
Yeah, when we get done, I sent channel posts with them, and we're gonna put, well, it's a delineator post, and we're gonna put reflectors on it, so hopefully, we can prevent that from happening again. We tried to mark them.
Thomas Sasse. We tried to get an appointment when we could both go up there, we, that never happened, the weather turned bad, and I was out of town, so on and so forth, but I told him that you and I had gone and looked at that site, talked about it, I told him, uh, of some possibilities that we discussed, I said, nothing's been decided, and I also shared our concerns about getting in there and tearing up his haymeadow. Thomas Sasse owns some property on the curve where muddy road goes by the two lighted posts. The light just above that, right on the outside of that curve, he has a haymeadow there, and the bar ditch washed out, washed a bunch of rock and gravel, has been for years, looks like, probably three or four years anyway, out onto his haymeadow, so he requested us to go look at it. So Gary and I went up and looked, uh, on a Saturday, I think, and, uh, Gary talked about some possible plans to mitigate that problem, so I told him that, uh, I would talk to you about it again, and that, you certainly were willing to try to do something, I couldn't, I said, I can't tell you when that's gonna happen, I said, we're in the right of the front end of a magloride project, but, I just don't want that to get dropped through the cracks, which I don't believe you will allow that to happen, but, uh, I said, you know, I think Gary will do what he can, and, and I said, my concern is, and you need to understand this, sir, if we go in there and remove all that rock and gravel, you're gonna have nothing but thistle and, and weed problems for two or three years, and he didn't agree with me about that, he said, I don't think so, I think that grass will come back in, and I said, well, as long as you, understand and have been told that there's a good chance that, uh, you're gonna lose some production out of there, which he, of course, doesn't have that anyway, because of the rocks. But somebody had gone in there and tried to shave a little of that stuff off, you could tell when I drove by it the other day with my back up, looked like somebody gone in there with a front end loader or something, but. He's willing to, to deal with whatever scar it leaves.
So, in other words.
He was hoping we'd go in there and blade everything up, and take a front end loader and haul, and get it out of there, I thought, okay.
All right, as long as he understands.
That conversation, and I said, there's a good chance that we could bury a machine in there, I think, if the water conditions are wrong, so I said, I know that Gary won't go in there if he thinks there's a, chance of doing damage to your hay field.
And we'll be as generous as what we can, and I'll, I'll treat it as if it was my property, you know, and, and, but yeah, as long as you're okay with it, and he's okay with it, we'll see if we can get some of that cleaned out.
And I can shoot him an email and get something in writing as well, you know, versus a phone conversation, but he was very reasonable, and. And you know, it's not, I didn't look at it as, okay, you're complaining, we're gonna fix it, it was obviously a county road issue. It's an inherent problem, as we saw, I mean, good lord, I don't know, other than disverting that water.
Yeah, and I think the mistake was made when someone went in there, uh, long ago, and they put that B ditch on that south side, it should have just left, been left slow.
Yeah.
And then the water would have gotten off the road in various places, instead of all coming, getting channeled down to where it jumped out of that ditch and onto his property. But back to putting culverts in, like we talked about, I, I want to get that done in the next couple of weeks, because it seemed like last year, around, early July is when we started getting our torrential rains.
We had, I looked, we had a rain, some rain event, not severe, every day the last three weeks of July.
Whenever rodeo starts to count on it.
So for that reason, I'll get out there today and I'll mark it, what I normally do is I put a, uh, a flag or something out, when I do the locates, I use that as a reference point. But I'll get out there and get it marked today and get the one called down on it, and we'll get that done within the next two or three weeks, get some culvert put in and get it fixed the way it needs to be.
What's Dan's name up there, Conseger, is it near his place?
Right, border, right, on the east side, yeah, the sheriff.
Well, that's what I'm picturing.
Roger and I went out and looked at it a couple of weeks ago, and he thought there was a culvert that went across the road, north, I mean, to the west of there, and we might be able to, clean it out, and then maybe add another one and take care of it, so.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, thank you, the other thing I wanted to just mention, and I hope you take this with the intent, on the surface, I don't mean anything underlying about it, or I tell you, uh, I understand you guys hired a new operator, Mr. Wilson. Originally was part-time, and then ended up being full-time or whatever, I don't know, but. My request is this, that, uh, as commissioners, as a commissioner, I would ask that, when you hire somebody, if you could have a courtesy, if, for no other reason, let us know that, I had somebody ask me that, and I felt like an idiot, because I had no idea what they were talking about. Uh, obviously, you, you're an employee of the county, answer to the commissioners, not everybody does that, because we have elected officials and so on and so forth, but, uh, I just thought, maybe it's on me to go down there and talk to you more, I don't know about that, but.
What was the issue, Tom?
Uh, just that we had a new hire come onto the county, and I certainly didn't know about it, maybe my fellow commissioners did, but, uh.
No, I'm not in contact, but that's, that is a good point.
If an elected official hires somebody, it's really none of our business, but if one of our employees hires somebody, I think it is, and so I would just.
Or that you needed a guy, and I didn't realize you had a vacancy, actually.
We had one resign recently.
And it happens with sheriff a lot, too, you know, that.
No, I don't have a problem with that, um, where do you want this line of communication?
Oh, they shoot us an email and say, hey, I've got this vacancy, or we filled a vacancy, or whatever, doesn't have to be.
And we're not, we wouldn't get into your hair on what hire, it's your job to hire him, but.
Just to make you aware, we do bring somebody new on board.
That you have a vacancy, or that you're bringing somebody on board.
Okay.
Just personnel stuff, you know, but, uh, if it's, you know, if you can ask Sherry, hey, just let these commissioners know, we've got a vacancy, we need a blade hand, or we hired a blade hand, or whatever.
Okay.
I just thought, yeah, you know, as a commissioner, I should know, now, maybe you don't have to tell me, maybe I should go find out, but. I think coming from your end makes a lot more sense.
I'll do that, you know, I, otherwise, it would just eliminate some frequent stops on your part, unnecessary frequent stops to find out if we got somebody new hired on, so, no, I don't mind doing that. I'll just shoot out an email to all three of you.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you, sir, I appreciate it, anything else, all right?
Looks look good.
See you back.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary, good job catching up.
No problem. Good thing.
Okay, well, shall we adjourn, gentlemen, or, oh, no, wait a minute.
We could take a break.
Okay. By consent, we'll be in adjournment for three or four minutes. Call the meeting back to order prior to public help coming forward for their, for her report. Little show and tell, little story behind it, and that's why I'm gonna do this today, Dick Downey gave me this when he was a county commissioner, I don't know why, what prompted him to do that, but. Uh, I've kept it all these years, and then when we got our new bookcases, we, I decided we ought to have some conversation pieces, so I brought it back in, it's a mousetrap, a self, well, it's not self-setting, but once you set it, it's a self resetting mousetrap from Germany. So a mouse goes in, steps on a little platform, when he does that, it closes this door behind him, and then climbs up, goes out on a little platform, drops down, and, and do a bucket of water, container of water, and so I was explaining all this to my friend Commissioner Prince, and don't you know, he decides he's gotta have one, well, I'm not giving him mine. I thought it was only one existence, he didn't ask for it, nobody.
So is there a hole in the bucket?
Uh. Yeah.
When the mouse walks through here.
Goes up to the penthouse and dives into his pool.
Steps on a lever, which resets the whole thing.
And drops him into the water and resets it, there's a little place for bait right there, peanut butter or whatever to get him in there, and then he crawls up this tube, and he can't come back down because of these three, little tabs been in there.
That's correct.
And the only place he's gotta go is out onto this little flappy platform, well, when he, when he does, then it resets this all over again, and so the process.
And he falls into the water.
You can repeat more than, more than one, you can go swimming at a time.
And so the only, the only thing you gotta do then is redump the can whenever, you know.
So when his buddy goes to save him, he's in trouble too.
Yeah, they could get six of them, and they're doing the back story.
So where did you find?
Oh, yeah, so let me, so my friend Commissioner Prince was so enamored with it, he decided he had to have one, he didn't ever officially ask me for mine.
Never did.
Because I thought that was the only one in existence, so of course, in this day and age.
Yeah, and that, everything could be found, I, I got the name of the company, it's a German-made item, it's actually very old, it's made in like the forties, and they don't make it anymore. And I went to eBay, and sure enough, there were two of them on there, one was missing the container where they do their acrobatics into the water, their back foot, and then there was one in a red box, that had all the parts to it, and, uh, I went crazy and bought it.
The original box?
The original box, and I asked my, I called my wife, and I said to her, hey, honey, I just bought a mousetrap, I just want to let you know, because she watches everything that comes through on credit cards. She says, look, you don't have to tell me when you spent four bucks, I said, honey, I spent ninety. I said, honey, I spent ninety-one dollars.
It comes with a mousetrap, right?
Could've been a walkie-mic.
Sitting and dancing mouse.
It was actually seventy-seven dollars plus shipping and all the rest.
Wow.
So I will own one too, but I will not bring it here.
Well, you should bring it for comparative analysis. Good morning, how are you?
How are you?
I'd like to see the box, too.
I'd like to, yeah.
So if you don't mind bringing it in, I'd love to see it. How are you?
Good, thanks, how about you?
I'm well, thank you.
Good.
Okay.
Okay, so public health is in forty-five places right now.
Yeah.
How's it going?
Have you received any mail? That's all I wanna know.
Um, we have not. But we don't get mail every day.
I'm not a happy person right now.
You're still getting mailed down to the other place?
Because you put the mailbox in?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, it'll get mail. I'm also suspect of our mail carrier, but.
But the address, your new address hasn't gotten out yet.
No, not really, it really hasn't. But we did forward, you know, did like an official forward. So, yeah, we'll see. I'll go check, I'm gonna check it today when I go back. You'll be the first to know if I get mail.
Yeah. It took five of us to put that mailbox in. My two grandkids.
Well, now I know why.
Chris, yeah. Chris dug the hole.
Deep enough?
Oh, no. And Alyssa and I installed and concreted and, so we got it.
A good time, by all.
That was before his arm was dislocated and broken.
Ooh.
My grandson fell off of my wife's cutting horse and broke his left arm.
Oh, no, I didn't know that.
Fracture of the ulna, fracture in the elbow and dislocated. So they had to put him under yesterday and reset his arm, put a cap.
Poor baby.
Oh, he likes it.
Oh, I'm sure he's getting all kinds of attention for it, yeah.
Yep, sign it?
No, it hadn't been signed yet when I saw it last night, so, anyway.
Poor little nugget. Um, so besides the move, which we're pretty darn close with, so carpet's coming on the twelve.
Okay.
I'll be done painting by then, whether it be the death of me, if I'd never seen that paintbrush.
Like if you really had to, you could be done today.
Oh, for sure.
If you really had to, right? So it's just touch up, cut it in and.
Yeah, yeah, all the rolling's done, except for the storage area.
It looked good.
Not gonna worry about that right now. Thank you.
I'll still try to patch the patch, but.
Patch the patch.
On the ceiling.
Oh, I wouldn't even worry about it, I painted over it. I think it'll be okay.
Would you consider ribbon cutting and having our papers available?
I would, I'd love to have a little.
That'd be fun.
Maybe give them a week or so to get in there and get their feet on the ground. And we'll make a big deal about that.
Okay, that'd be good. We need to probably plan it for like before the twenty-first.
Of?
June.
Okay.
Or after, because I'm having surgery, I'll be out for a week. Hey, put that mousetrap down there.
Yeah, something's going on back there. There's animals or something running around making noises behind Mr. Canada, before the twenty-first.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe in the afternoon of the nineteenth, we'll be coming home from San Isabel. But question would be, are either after or before or significantly after that. You guys think you'll be over there by the nineteenth?
Oh yeah, we'll be moved in on probably the thirteenth. So thirteen, fourteenth, so we could be.
We'll just be in town on the nineteenth for commissioner meeting.
Set up and ready to go. So we could do either the nineteenth or the twentieth, whichever.
Uh.
Unless you wanna go to like the first or second of July.
Just a suggestion, I would think that would give you a little more time to settle in, get your books up, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I'd rather not rush it.
Yeah, I know if there's any rush.
Yeah.
How about, I know, I agree. How about the first, Monday? Then if we hit the papers on Thursday and Friday, is that right? They come out on Thursday and Friday for the following Monday.
Is this an open house, sort of a reservation?
That's what we're talking about, yeah, like an open house and like the little ribbon cutting.
Free shots and stuff or something?
Hey, well, free shots. What kind of shots are we talking about?
I want shots, I want single shots.
I know, I wanna give people single shots.
Yeah, be careful what shots.
What kind of shots are we talking about here?
Yeah, what do you think, four to six?
I know how to make juice in an IV.
Oh, that's not. Four to six?
Four to six would be great.
Did I want?
Yep, that'd actually be perfect, because we'll be done with blood pressures by then.
Could you be so kind as to deal with the pressure releases for the paper?
Yes, absolutely.
Because I guarantee you, I'll forget. Yeah, and then we'll, we'll come up with some little treatments and a ribbon and.
Yeah.
Scissors that'll reach from here to the Methodist church and. Yeah, a couple pieces of equipment operating.
Perfect.
Yeah, it'd be fun.
Yeah.
And that'll really be kind of your first official day since you really have a lease with the other one.
Yeah, that's true, good point, that's a good point.
Good idea too, yeah.
Nice, okay, cool, that's exciting. Um, okay, so as far as my report goes.
Don't really care about that.
Nobody really cares about that.
We just wanna visit.
Okay, sounds good. MRC, um, we're doing two sports physicals, I don't know, three sports physicals days actually. One in June, one in July, one in August.
And the MRC does those?
MRC helps out with those, yeah. Plus, um, Dr. Beck is who's gonna be doing them. There's a couple of other providers too that are volunteering to help us though too, so. Not from here, of course, but. Let's see, what else do I have? We're gonna be having a couple of trainings coming up, the EPR deliverables completely done.
Nice, how many pages was that?
Super exciting.
Ninety?
Um, no, all told it was probably like a hundred and twenty, between all like sixteen deliverables. So, yeah, was a, was a big job, but. Um, but speaking of EPR, I have, I sent out to you guys all emails, but I brought them too in case you didn't find them.
You've gone right up.
Um, the job description. And I think I'm gonna offer about fifteen dollars an hour for that. I made the pay from eleven to thirty depending on, you know, if, if you're a bachelor prepared nurse, you probably should make a little bit more than a basic EMT, but.
Right.
So.
Okay.
But it's all in the budget, so it's not gonna cost anymore. So hopefully we'll get started on that in the next couple of weeks.
And we got that grant all signed and sealed and delivered.
Sent off, it's all, all in good shape, so. And I have a check here for Country Strong Teens, we're, um.
We thought it was.
Um, it's already been signed, sir. I know, that's what Meredith handed it to me, I'm like, sweet, more money, not for me. Um, but we're gonna essentially sponsor the Country Strong Teens camp this year. So they work with troubled teens, teens that have, um, that are in counseling. And, yeah, just kids who are a little more at risk to not succeed.
So this check is to them from?
Public Health, yeah. And it's out of our child fatality funds, which we hang on to until about right this time. And then if we haven't used it, then we can spend it on stuff like this, um.
And that amount would be for?
It's for five hundred.
Oh, nice, okay.
So.
When is the, when is the camp gonna be?
It's the twenty through the twenty-fourth, I think, of June. No, the twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth of June. So I've seen some really good things come out of that. I've seen kids that were just in a shell, suicidal, not doing well in school. Come around and completely thrive. So, of course, that's not gonna be the case for every kid, but if we do it for one, it's good enough for me. And that's really about it.
So you're just waiting for carpet, huh?
Just waiting for carpet. And sink and.
And obviously, yeah, we'll get those sinks in there. You saw the lights went in the exam room.
I haven't been over there yet, yeah, I'm excited.
Yeah, they slipped in and put those in at some point.
Yeah, um, he called me on Tuesday when I was in like a migraine coma. And like, I don't know, call Tom.
So where are you doing your business? Is it in the clinic?
So we're still at the clinic now, yeah, we're still doing shots and everything, yeah, everything's still.
You're not caught between.
No shingles, right?
No shingles, sorry. And I'm not sure we ever will.
Yeah. I saw in our vouchers, a check for refrigerator.
That was for the batteries for the refrigerator.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, so the backup, which is good to have since we're having a power outage every time there's a storm cloud goes over town.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we had the refrigerator.
Yeah, we do have the refrigerator, it's the backup batteries for the refrigerators.
It was pretty pricey too, like four hundred bucks or?
Eighteen. No, eight thousand.
Oh, eight thousand?
It was eight thousand.
The batteries?
Yeah. They're, they're like this big. And there's like six of them.
Like those deep cycle, yeah.
Keep the drugs, code.
Yeah. Yeah, but I got, um, we got a grant for that that would've gone to something else anyways, so we'll have it.
Good, okay.
Alrighty.
Anything else?
I don't.
Oh, I'm excited about our open house.
Me too, thank you all for your support, I appreciate it.
Maybe have watermelon.
Oh, yeah, hey, we can have watermelon seed spitting contests.
I'm all over.
I used to do that with Sydney all the time.
Sign me up.
I'd like to get stuff out of my house.
That little girl can spit seeds when she was tiny, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can bring that stuff whenever you want, because I could actually use it.
To which place?
To the clinic.
Okay.
If you're ready to get rid of it.
Well, it's just, you know, walking.
Good morning, ma'am, treasurer's next up.
All right.
Sometimes we get hung up on transition. And then I get y'all that because the meetings go too long.
Well, we got time to still stay on schedule.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. Thank you for coming in. Let me see here. Make sure I had the right one on.
Any windfalls, any, anybody leave us any money, some dowry or something?
Too bad, no.
Pilty, but. So.
He has a lock.
I could ask you this in your office, but. I don't know how to sort out pilp money and how, who to give what.
I know you don't. I told you the other day, kinda sorta, we went over it a little bit.
And I know who's eligible, but I don't really know how we go about making those final decisions. If you get this much, you don't get any, you get some kind of thing.
Yeah, um.
It's why you get the big bucks.
First come, first served, it's why we get the big bucks.
Are you talking about Title III?
Yes.
That's strictly your guys'.
That's you, that is a weak response.
I know it is, but it's honest truth. All I can, I can show you what has been done in the past. Now, one thing I didn't mention when we did, talked about that the other day was some of that, forty-eight thousand, has already been advertised and supposed to be used for something. So you might check into that to see what it was supposed to be now. I think Donna knows something about one of them, she said something about they didn't, decided they didn't wanna use it.
So the way it works then, we convene a meeting of some kind, look at some requirements and see what gets hammered, huh?
Well, what I would, myself would do is find out what interest is out there, what people wanna use the money for and make the best decision.
That's what I'm saying, you gotta figure out priority. Well, you know, so I, I think at some point, we need to have a, just a mid-year look at how everybody's spending and what they need. You know, you just heard Gary had a transmission problem, but.
Can't use it.
Can't use it, that's, that's my point, we gotta look at the buckets.
Yeah, yeah, that, that thing you cannot use, you have, that's, that's really restricted, a lot restricted.
So we need to understand that and then get the buckets where, where we can.
And that's by a long shot, it's a water truck and they use it for the, they could use it for the fire. But they did say if your county attorney will support you in court, then go ahead and use it for that.
They'll never have.
I'm not going out. Maybe somebody else wants to go out there, but I'm not.
Jared Big, I'd ask him when they really tightened it down, I'd ask him, I says, so what happens if you go over out that perimeter that you didn't know you did? He says, oh, as long as your county attorney will support you in court, there's no problem.
I don't even know who these guys are. Yeah.
You may find out.
That's right. Okay, well, I diverted there, sorry, but.
Yeah, you can, you can come in anytime and we can go over what I have in my file, any, any of you guys, or even at one time if you want.
We can save your time if we did that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so seventy, I have these numbers from our last meeting, seventy-eight thousand or seventy-four thousand or something.
And some of that, I think, has already been spoken for, but I don't know how that part works. If they don't use it, if they decided they don't want it, is it back on the table?
Having to get spoken about.
You guys have to advertise in the paper and you say in the paper what you are, uh, gonna spend the money for. And it was the same process, they come and said, we would like to have use this and this and this. And I don't know what entity it was that was supposed to get the money, but they said that they just didn't wanna use it for that, so. And I don't know, I don't remember what it was about, but.
Well, we've had one request, which I thought was interesting because it came right on the heels of us finding out about the Title III pilp money, I mean, like the next day.
Is it from the, from the homeowners association? No, search and rescue, okay.
So, yeah, okay, all right.
And I think it was used at one time, one time before with search and rescue, I'm not positive.
I think it was.
Anything, uh, gentlemen?
Nope, thanks, Virginia, looks good.
Tracking, okay? No anomalies? I would move we approve the May treasurer's report.
Well, a second.
We moved a second to approve the May treasurer's report discussion. Hearing them, we will proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, pose nay.
I got a question for you.
Mm-hmm.
There was a motorcycle accident the day before Memorial Day, almost in your front yard.
Mm-hmm.
Did that guy survive?
We never heard, he did.
One way or the other. I'll tell you a story if you'd like to hear, I'm dealing, I'm dealing with the family. He's, he's a veteran, he has severe injuries, he's in a hospital trunk in the VA right now. Just dealing with that.
I guess state patrol handled it, Mike didn't know anything about it. It looked pretty bad when I went by.
We weren't home, but somebody texts us and says they've got backup clear past your house.
That was when they had the road closed?
Mm-hmm.
The guy was coming up as they were going down to that.
Yeah, I know, you see going down lane, there's a big old tire mark, it's skid mark, one lane, yes.
Do you know what, how it happened?
Not heard of, you guys are the first ones to tell me anything.
Okay, so thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Thanks for all the non-information and all the direction. Love that.
Thanks for avoiding everything.
Just come in anytime and I'll go over.
I'll give them non-legal advice.
You're lucky, I go, Tom, we just talked about this.
Non-buying legal advice.
It and just, by golly, always good to see you, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
How you doing? How you doing?
I'm well, thank you.
Oh, thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Other than the obvious, right?
It's not been a hugely eventful month, but it's been an eventful month. It's been an adventure.
You've been busy.
Yeah, very busy. Yeah, very busy. Got to climb the tower, did I mention that?
Yes.
That was great.
Swinging on that with your nanobeam?
Yes, indeed.
We're making progress though.
Yes, we are, so the, the most. Greatest piece of news is that, um, with using the nanobeam connections and beaming high-speed internet to send, to, uh, search and rescue, public health and the VSO have been able to cancel some unused DSL lines, some phone lines, and we're now paying for the high-speed fiber.
Nice.
So.
With our savings from those.
Yep, exactly.
Just exactly what we were hoping for.
I have a nice little map here because you all know how much.
I love maps.
Little map of our, of our, uh, setup now that we have, um, beaming high-speed fiber to the clinic, to search and rescue, to public health and to the VSO, so. Yep.
Wait.
Fun times.
Lot of digging going on over in that part of the woods yesterday.
Yeah, that was, uh.
Pretty exciting.
Yeah, I'll bet, I'll bet, I'm assuming that's where it was headed, so.
Yes, sir, it's coming right in our door.
Guys will love it.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's a pretty good, uh, pretty good deal, and so what were we paying for high-speed?
High-speed fiber, we are paying about a, uh, a thousand dollars right now. Um, hopefully in the next month they'll get us up to two hundred megabytes a second, that's been a pulling teeth process, unfortunately. That'll go up to twelve, but, um, it'll all, that will, um.
Be offset.
Be offset by some of what we're doing. Plus, when I was up there on this tower right here, this is the tower right next to, next to the sheriff's office, I actually saw that I could see Roden, the, the peak on Roden Bridges', uh, Roden Bridges' building. So there exists the possibility of beaming another one to Roden Bridge and being able to cancel some of those DSL lines too.
I think you can see my house.
We all want to get in that line, no. Nice, well, good, that.
There was another thing that, that didn't, uh, that didn't make it on here because it's not mine in particular, but, um, uh, the city of West Cliff contracted with Travis Roundtree, uh, the gentleman that, that introduced all of these communication systems here, um, to put up cameras on all the, all of the parks in West Cliff. That, those camera feeds are now beaming to the top of this tower, which are then beamed to West Cliff City Hall. And then I got a phone call from, uh, West Cliff saying, so why do you have high-speed and we don't? I said, well, because we pay a thousand dollars a month and you pay a hundred. So she said, is there any way, and so, um, there, a possibility exists to beam it on the existing infrastructure, we don't even have to actually pay for any of the equipment that would go in, but I just wanted to put that out there, let you know that that's a possibility. I have to explore their network and our network and see if they're compatible, so it's not. I know that you brought that up a couple of months back, so.
I asked you to look into that, but was this fully intended to pay their pro-rata share of this, is, we're not looking for, they are not looking for a freebie.
Okay, understood, and that would be, once we get our speed increased, that would, could be easily taken care of. Um, we, like I said, I just have to look at the compatibility of the networks and see how to integrate them, so.
Perfect.
That's where I'm at, um, replaced, rebuilt the server for the clerk in the last few days.
How many times did you do that?
Uh, yes.
Stinking electricity keep going out?
Lightning strikes. That one went, that one went right through battery backups too, it was just, it was so powerful and so intense, it just went right through battery backups.
Surge protectors don't help?
Surge protectors do nothing compared to this level of energy, um.
That was a bad lightning strike.
It was, it was really bad, I really, it was Wednesday, yeah, I'm just really glad we didn't lose anything else, so.
Lost it in the valley, out of our place.
Yep, um.
I'm gonna get on a mission to try to find us a seriously commercial generator.
That would be awesome.
It would be, um, the, uh, the, the issue we deal with is not just the power outages, it's the spikes too, and that's why we have all the battery backups. So I've lost, um, I think I've lost three battery backups in the last month, I've lost three the month before that, just from the little spikes and the micro pulses that we have, so, yeah, just frying them, so, but they're, but replacing a fifty or a hundred dollar battery backup is cheaper than an eight or thousand dollar computer, so.
At least it worked, right?
Exactly, that's, that's their job, so.
How many cameras did you buy for the courthouse?
Um, what was I looking at? I have one replacement camera, uh, but we talked about it at our staff meeting, buying two more, two more exterior cameras? Yeah, between six and seven hundred dollars to repl, to, uh, to install some, uh, more cameras. So, uh, but they, they are secure, they're not, they're not the cameras you buy on eBay or, or Amazon, they're, I missed that one, sorry. Uh, but they are, but they're heavy-duty, they're secure and they are, um, they have night sight, they have infrared now, so, yeah, yes, sir.
Um, maybe I slipped through this one you talked about before, but tip-a-cop fibers, what's that?
Flyers, um, so tip-a-cop is a, tip-a-cop is a, is a program wherein the sheriff's department is gonna go and, uh, play waiter at Willie's. And I believe that's on the, is that the eighteenth? Okay, there's actually a flyer on, on one of the billboards, um, okay, and it's a really neat little deal, they, they, they take all the tips from, uh, from, from their service and they put it towards buying lunches for kids at the school, that type of thing, so it's a really neat, uh, really neat little process, very, very popular last year.
Why is it on your deal?
Um, because I'm the one that, I'm the only one that has a printer big enough to print them. So, um, I print those, I print things like that for the sheriff's department.
So this was printing?
Yeah, this was, this was printing, yeah, there was some editing in there too, but, yeah.
We got a, an email from the sheriff a couple of days ago about asking, wanted to let us know that you were gonna go help them. I'm not sure that's actually even necessary, I mean, we all work together, if you need to help them, I don't, I, I mean, maybe you folks need to know, but I didn't feel like it was important for me to know that you're gonna go over and give them a hand, I mean, this is the county.
I understand.
This is my opinion.
I understand that, yes.
No, you didn't do it, the sheriff did it.
I understand.
Just wondering what budget it's in.
I do have a little concern and I suspect that's why he did, because I voiced that to him.
Okay.
Certainly not opposed to the county IT director doing his job. Uh, I'm just concerned about balance.
Well, is, is your scope to do all county building or county agencies, including, uh, districts?
That's, yeah.
Which means your budget has to account for that.
By districts, you mean?
Hospital, he's done.
No, not, not hospitals, but, uh, Roden Bridge, Wetmore.
Roden Bridge, I understand.
Wetmore Library, all the Roden Bridges', um, landfill. Basically, anything county-related, IT county-related.
Non-special tax district.
Yep.
Well, library isn't.
Wetmore Library, you said.
Yeah, not, not, not the public library here, the Wetmore Library, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Good.
I don't know, no, I didn't actually get on there, I actually rebuilt, I actually created a new computer for Wetmore Library, that's going in in two weeks, but, so. But that's where we're at.
Good deal.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Be well.
Appreciate it.
Your budget, you okay?
We're doing alright, yep. Thank you, sir.
I really look up at this guy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Been waiting all day for that, haven't you?
He looks down on you. And me and everyone else.
Extension?
Usually you guys take a break, so I was just waiting.
I know, we, we did just.
We beat you to it.
Yeah, hey, how are you?
Oh, it's extension, let's take a break.
Looking very sunflower this morning.
I know, it's finally summer, yes, yes, good, how are you?
Uh, I bring greetings.
I know, I should knock on some wood.
Bring greetings from Ramona.
Oh, yay.
Loves you.
Wants you back.
One of the commissioners from, lives in Creed.
Yeah, yeah.
She said that, uh, certainly was their loss, but she was very excited that you were here and told her we just really appreciate you and love the job you're doing and she was very.
Yeah, she's a good lady.
Yeah, I, I sat down with her at breakfast and I was checking my hunting application real quick and I said, oh ma'am, didn't, didn't have clues you were. I said, I'll bet you're dying to know if you draw on an Alclash, she said, yeah, muzzleloader.
Yeah, she did.
Is it on there?
Hard to believe.
She was a big muzzleloader.
No clue she was a hunter.
Yeah, they, they, she does like rendezvous, like.
Yeah, that's what she told me, anyway, she was very complimentary and wanted me to tell you hello and all that, so, pretty cool.
Cool, thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem, okay, enough of that. See business, right?
Yes, yes. Um, so this is a really short letter, but I was writing it really fast and I was like, surely there's more going on than I can put in here. Um, so I've done a lot of like site visits lately, gone out to homeowners' houses and looked at pinion decline, and there's two, two going on. One is the Ipsbeetle that we're all familiar with and then a scale, and it's kind of hard to tease out which one that is, but that's something I'm trying to work on in identifying and working with the State Forest Service to help landowners get that, get lots of weed visits, so that's exciting. Noxious weed visits, let me clarify, uh, that. We are.
Just in case you think we're paying for regular weeds, no, this one.
We're not even allowed to answer questions about it, CSU, so, um, and so we've just had some communication with, uh, people interested in the cost share program and, um, you know, at some point this may come to the commissioners, but people are asking for local weed to be put on the cost share list, but due to our funding.
Yeah, that's probably not gonna happen.
Yeah, that's what I tried to explain, but I think you might have some people in here asking, so it's just a heads up, uh, there's that. Um, tomorrow from about nine-thirty to three, we're gonna close the office, we're taking the kids fishing tomorrow at Dewise.
Cool.
CPW is giving them some pre, um, fishing poles and hooks and bait and stuff, and we've got twenty-seven kids registered, so that'll be fun.
Four-H new.
Um, it's actually, uh, mostly four-H kids, but we opened it up to everybody, just trying to get some more involvement and show the breadth of four-H programming, so.
Good.
We have some truck raffle tickets if you ride upstairs, if you guys wanna win an F-150.
Uh, you send any more of them home to my grandkids, you and I are gonna have a fit.
We get half of everything we sell, so, yeah, so I am pushing those tickets, uh, so.
Maybe someday they can actually have that drawing in our county and give that pickup away here.
I don't think they really have, I buy those tickets every year and I don't think they ever give it away for real, because it's the same truck.
Surely, surely it's not.
Yeah, I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
Uh, I think at one point, uh, winning, maybe not the truck ticket, but one ticket that won either second or third prize came from Custer County, so. We got some good mojo on that, um, but I would, I'll take that, um, to the foundation and see if they could draw it here sometime.
Lamar La Hunter somewhere this year, September.
Okay, just let me write a note real quick.
Tell them commissioners want that to be given away in Custer County, not out in some Baca County, I mean, how do you even say Baca, Backa?
I say Baca, but I'm sure I'm saying it wrong.
I've heard it both ways this week.
Tomato, tomato.
Yeah.
Baca, Baco.
Um, I wanna let you know too, I do have the bus reserves for the weed tour.
Okay, bus reserve. Perfect.
We had our first test run on the new spray rig, landowner was thrilled.
Yeah, uh, Roger came in and showed me the photo or the video, so.
Oh, yeah, cool, yeah.
Yeah, good job, guys. Um, oh, uh, the next thing in July, it'll be crazy, so if you guys wouldn't mind, can I just submit a written report and not present, I'm sure it'll just be wild, and so.
Yeah, fair time.
Yeah.
Okay, by me?
Alright, great.
No problem.
I need to look and see when our meeting is, in July, mid-March, seventeenth.
During the rainstorms?
And that's here, correct? Seventeenth.
Seventeenth of July.
So Wednesday, what's that fair schedule look like?
Twelve through the twenty-first.
Yeah, so on a typical Wednesday, I think they weigh in animals late in the day.
I'll let you know, I don't know what that looks like, I'll take your word for it, Tom.
Yeah, we had Wetmore.
So if that's cool, I'll just get that to.
That's fine, you don't need to argue with that.
Um, so that's about it, um, for me, it feels like a lot more, do you? Kelly's on our extension advisory, so if there's anything you, I forgot.
Sheriff's that board.
Nobody yet, we gotta work on that.
Yeah.
I, I would assume there is a set of bylaws forthcoming from this group?
We're working on that.
Okay. Because I have the current set right here in the notebook.
They're not too much different.
Good, so you are actually doing something?
Yeah, we meet monthly.
Not just a big social thing?
Well, you know.
Half and half.
What's it called, what, what officially are you gonna call it?
Extension Advisor Committee.
Yeah, yeah, we could, we could work on a name, but for now, that sounds good, yeah. Yep.
Well, good, anything else kiddo, is it okay?
I'll probably remember something else when I get upstairs, but that's it for now.
Retract, you okay?
I love that you ask me every time, I appreciate that.
I wanna make sure you're happy, happy employees, a good one.
Yes, thank you, thank you, so.
So last Friday went okay, you had water, you had restrooms finally, or did you get all that sorted out?
Well, I just took them over to the Saddle Club because it was open, but I, I should just get with George and
Yeah.
get a tour of how things work, that way I'm not randomly calling you, oh, I forgot about this, yeah, so, but we did have all the keys to open up, so it's just knowing where to turn stuff.
Yeah, and you know, my students built those restrooms, I can't remember where that shut off is, I thought it was right there on the east side with the.
Yeah, I walked around and I was like, I don't see anything, but I'm not, I'm not super skilled.
You're not tuned in on vows?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be other things.
Right, right, yeah, so.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll start with you.
Thanks, oh, good.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I think that takes care of our staff reports and move on to unfinished business, gentlemen, anything? Nor do I.
The clerks.
Yeah.
Yes. They are.
On for EMS response to Wetmore?
Yeah, I thought we would be unfinished business, but whatever, we don't care.
Okay.
We enjoy being here.
Wait.
I speak the truth, why?
Better than other thing, other.
Your fund mate is that easy to peg?
Yes, sir, it is. Jackie's like, what? I am, I'm crazy.
Well, yeah, that's a great point, uh, obviously, we've been out of the office a little bit, I didn't know if you wanted to, uh, have a discussion on the agenda during the item of talking about EMS.
Whatever you wanna do.
So let's just do it all then, if there's anything else, which I'm assuming there is, but we'll see.
I'm sorry, anything else we need?
Why are you here?
For that.
For that, for the EMS discussion, you asked us on Friday to do some
Yes.
homework, so we did some homework and now we're gonna come back and talk.
You got an answer?
Well, certainly not answers, but we asked some information.
Good, I hardly wait to get there, so.
They're on new business, so.
Let's move on.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah, based on Commissioner Candace, or Commissioner Prince's question, I thought there was something else, I'm sorry, my mistake, but you're on the agenda.
But we're long they have you regardless, I don't wanna make it seem like you're not welcome.
Uh, and unfortunately, we didn't amend our agenda to change the order, so we'll hammer through these other things, so, quick, if that's alright, um. So on a new business, uh, we will allow public comment prior to voting on any action item. First item of business consideration is the Southern Colorado, uh, re-tac reimbursement through Mr. Byerly. Uh, did you gentlemen get a copy of that?
I did, sorry.
So that should be already.
It's re-tac, not re-tab.
I thought we had a new one, I was trying to figure out.
I don't believe it is, it is, I'll apologize all over myself.
So they got a.
It's actually southeastern Colorado, right?
Are you talking about re-tac?
Mm-hmm.
No, it's Southern Colorado re-tac.
Uh, this is.
S-E-C-R-E-T-A-C.
This is S-E-C-R-E-T-A-C.
They got it as S-C-R-E-T.
S-C-R-E-T is Southern Colorado Regional Emergency Trauma Advisory Council, so this is correct.
Oh.
On the agenda anyways.
R-T, re-tac is what it's called.
Advisory Council.
The advisory, yes, Trauma Advisory Council.
Southern Colorado.
Southern Colorado Regional Emergency Trauma Advisory Council, one of nine re-tacs in the, in the.
Right, but this has a V instead of a C at the end of it.
It was just my typo.
Right, that's all we're saying, it was just a typo.
But I wonder, Byerly doesn't usually.
Yeah, I don't know either, I, uh, I got a note about this, um, ba-da-ba-da-ba-da. And he's.
Regional what?
Yeah.
Advisory Council.
Yeah, it's Southern Colorado re-tac on the top of his invoice and then down on another line, it's S-E-C-R-E-T-A-C, so, I don't know if there's. Is there a southeastern region?
Uh, yes, there is, there's a southeastern.
So do you need to move to sign that or pay it, or what do we?
Yes, that's what he is asking for.
So I move that we authorize or sign or whatever is the required thing to, to pay that invoice, I guess.
Okay, we moved a second to, uh, sign the Southern Colorado re-tac invoice, yes, you may. Discussion about that.
What is that for?
One thousand six hundred dollars.
It was reimbursement for AEDs for their batteries and pads for their, uh, patrol vehicles.
Thank you.
So they're getting reimbursement to who then, is it?
Sheriff's Office.
Is it the sheriff's office budget?
Yep. I thought there was, oh, here it is, sorry, yeah, six, uh, rechargeable, non-rechargeable batteries.
What was the amount?
One thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars and ten cents. And then a charging pack. Further discussion, public comment. Hearing none will proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay,赞成, or discharys. Sorry. A little loud there. Pardon?
Okay, so now it's comp time. Is this your deal, Jay?
Sir?
Comp time?
Yeah, I'll talk about that. And I'm assuming Ms. Meredith is probably go back to you. Okay. All right, consideration of, uh, overtime policy, I think, versus comp time, but maybe you intended it to be comp time, I don't know.
I really talked, I did comp time. Overtime is, is, um. Is well established. We have the employee policy. I brought some information for you. I just took out the, and put into, just to shoot here, the, um, specific. Um, what exempt and non-exempt employees are. Okay, here's your one, Mr. Klein, I'm sorry. Oh, I do, I do. Okay. If I remember correctly, this all started when an exempt employee was, um, asking for or took significant amount of comp time. And the question came up is, who tracks it? How do we track it? How do we follow it? How do we know who's got what? And that kind of thing. And who's entitled to what? So, I started with, uh, our policy for our, our employee handbook. And our employee handbook is very clear, although I'm gonna make a recommendation the minute that we amend it slightly. Um, the handbook is very clear that exempt employees, and I'll tell you who are exempt employees according to our handbook. It's Human Services Director, Human Services Case Worker Level Three and Above, Human Resource Finance Manager, IT Director, Landfill Manager, OEM Director, Planning and Zoning Director, um, Public Health Nurse, and Roden Bridge Supervisor, and the Under Sheriff.
Is that page seventeen?
Um, I didn't write the page. I just, I put them into a picture.
It's three oh one dot one, if you can, if that helps.
So those are the people that we're talking about who report to the county commissioners. Now, I want to tell you that elected officials, I neglected to be involved in this. I felt elected officials really needed to handle their discussion on this directly with the people who report to them. I, I, like I said, I kind of went a little overboard on this, as I've been known to do. Um, I, I put together first a list of, and I want to first say Donna Hobbie was outstanding in helping me get the people and who's exempt, who's not exempt, how many hours they have. Donna Hobbie has a, has a very good method of keeping track of this. Although it's not a method that she could just shoot over to us because it's on different kind of papers and stuff, so we can say, hey, tell us where we are with our direct reports. The, uh, the federal law is very clear on overtime. Um, that if someone works in excess of forty hours, even though we have a thirty-five hour week, it starts with forty hours, um, they're entitled to time and a half. Our policy allows overtime, and this is for non-exempt employees. They can opt, if their supervisor approves, to take, uh, comp time instead of overtime. So the question for me was, what are we gonna do with our direct reports? And is it appropriate at any time ever for our direct reports to receive comp time? Because that was what the issue came down to us originally, and we felt needed to be tightened up. So I'm gonna recommend, and, and I'm not gonna move on it because it's just for discussion at the moment, but I'm gonna recommend a three point oh two dot two, where it says exempt employees. Let me give you my concept, and then I'll read you what I wrote. My concept was that when a person is hired who's exempt, and they've read their job description, they understand that this job may entail significant amount of time, and on just forty hours a week. They signed on to it, they applied for this job, they were hired knowing that, for example, um, Ms. Kelly may have to work late in the evening on an election night. You know, that's part of the job, it's just not an everyday thing. But I felt, should we, and this is just me speaking now, should we allow an exempt employee to have compensatory time? I, first of all, I'd like to say, I'm totally opposed to any cash outlay of overtime. So should we allow exempt employees to have time off if they have done something far exceeding, and the term I used, extraordinary, above and beyond what their, um, uh, the job description and the scope of their work is? And I felt that's probably appropriate in some instances. Um, and what are those instances? I don't know, and that's why I wrote this the way I did. What I was suggesting that we add to the bottom of three point, three oh two point two, last line, and I wrote, "Under extraordinary circumstances with approval of the majority of the Board of County Commissioners, so we would vote. Compensatory time off may be granted to exempt employees who are required to work for the county's benefit above and beyond the normal duties and responsibilities described in exempt employee's job description." Now, what I felt, and I made a form, saying that if an exempt employee was asking for comp time over and above, they would fill out a form, and this is what I came up with, but certainly, we can do anything we like. Just explaining to us what, what it was that was extraordinary, over and above the normal work time, expectations of their job, that we would consider why we should give you time extra, uh, time off that you would not normally have. Now, I agree with Chairman Flowers said multiple times, look, exempt employee can come and go basically as they please. I'm not sure I could agree with that completely. I anticipate, for example, Jackie Hobbie, even if she has worked four hours extra, I don't really want her going home early four hours, because if someone comes in during regular work hours, they expect to find these people, her or in anybody.
Or somebody.
So I'm not real fond of them just leaving, but if we schedule an extraordinary time off, we would manage it, and we would know what's going on. So I had, I came over the form saying that I believe I'm entitled to time off, compensatory time, for the fine reason that the three of us could make a determination. That's part of what I did, okay, and so you could look at that, and that was the language I wanted to add. I haven't read on mine, but it's kind of, I think I.
You didn't give me a copy?
Oh, yeah, um, I'd rather you make some more copies. I didn't make enough. It's the very last line, and I just added a suggestion to add to that that allows us to give compensatory time if necessary. Okay, and then I came up with tracking, because I felt that was the second half of this. And I made a spreadsheet that could be kept by, on Ms. Hobbie, Donna Hobbie, or our admin assistant, just to maintain a schedule. And I have one of these for each organization. Roden Bridge has one with just their employees. Uh, Planning and Zoning has one with her employee, ones that didn't have an employee, we didn't work, uh, landfill, we have them all. So each month, I was thinking, I have a separate one for each one. I don't know if I made one of those. For example, we would give one to Rusty on landfill. That would just be Rusty's employees. And on a monthly basis, he would either email it, he'd fill it out, he'd email it, which one of his employees took either vacation time or comp time. We're talking about, um, exempt employees. Rusty would fall under our non-exempt, because he's a landfill supervisor. And they would just send it in, and then somebody, a central person, whether it's Ms. Hobbie, or it is the administrative assistant, just maintains this. And it's just, what did we have last month?
That's an overtime.
Slut, overtime and or comp time, because some employees may have taken comp time instead, and that is in our policies that they have a right to do.
You got an option.
So that's kind of the overkill method that I usually handle when I'm asked a simple question. But I came down to, should we ever allow an exempt employee to have comp time for over and above? And I personally thought, you know, sometimes it's probably really appropriate. I don't want to just say, no. We could be judicious in terms of how we decide whether we're gonna let someone have that extra time or not. We'd take a vote of the three of us, and we could decide to do it or not, uh, is my suggestion. And then, a central point, to maintain the records of all the reports that come to us. We'll be responsible maintaining the direct reports, the supervisors, and the supervisors will send to whomever, either Donna or to our administrative assistant, what they are, and just maintain this on a spreadsheet. I have this on a spreadsheet, I just printed it out to give to you. So that's what I've been doing.
Well, certainly, thank you for the hours and hours. It boils out pretty clean, but there was a lot of.
A lot of eggs going through it to get there. You asked us to. Oh, this is what, for example, this one is, um, uh, for the B.O., for us, the three of us, we have three direct reports who are non-exempt. And that's what the form would look like that I'd give to each of the departments on a monthly basis. They'd be responsible to send that in to us. Any elected officials exempt from this, of course, they can do whatever they want, yeah, we share what we did. So that's kind of what I had in mind.
Good. Comments?
Just a quick one, Jay, good job. Comp time is, in the government, okay. Usually you see it, let's pretend we're in one guy instead of three, but not, but that would go without saying, we're, we're one boss, the three of us. I don't think you need the word extraordinary circumstances, because it's usually at the discretion of the boss, and usually that's up to you to decide whether it's worth it or not, and we'd have that discussion anyway. So that might get people hung up on the bar. Uh, you know, it's up to us, and, um, you don't have to explain it every time we do it to, you know, if they have to, you have to have that discussion. But what we said is what we believe, and so it's, you couldn't, in my mind, extraordinary be here, your mind is here, you know, it's just different, but we have that discussion and vote on it. That's why I like that. And having some record of, uh, and each supervisor, it's up to him to also to decide where his bar is, because he is one boss in that case, and then that's where he's giving.
Just the exempts would be.
That's what I meant.
So non-exems, our policy clearly says you could take comp in lieu of overtime if you choose.
I think it's a pretty good job, uh, here, Jay. And I, I like what you see. This made, you know, this is, you got the extraordinary circumstances, you know, it's, here's, here's why.
I would like a record of it.
Yeah, I think a record.
Rather just come to me and say, look.
Yeah.
Vern, I'm just picking on Vern, for example. Vern says, "I spent, I worked till midnight last night fixing, say, the, the sheriff's department, because he just felt it was necessary to get them up and running." Then he could come to us and say, you know, I'd like to take five hours off because you spent five hours, not, it's our county business, but it's beyond the scope of.
So you got a written record, and then, of course, the real record, the public record is when we talk about it, how we did it, and here's why.
Right, so I felt we should be the, we should be the gatekeeper in terms of yes or no. And, and the one that kind of stuck out in my mind is OEM. OEM understands part of that job could be working a fire that could be three or four days away from here, but when you took that job, you knew that's a possibility, and that's part of your job. Should you get comp time for that? I don't know.
How much? You can't spell that out this time, that would be.
Tell us why you feel it's over and above what your normal description is, and we can determine what's there and what's not. So that's kind of how I, I looked at it. Maybe way overkill, I know that, I do that sometimes.
That's a good example, and in that case, they know that we're gonna have to go on a twelve-hour shift sometime, and that might be expected, and may not get reimbursed for all those twelve-hour shifts. If, unless there was fifty of them in a row, we'd look at what we're gonna do, and it's me discussing, gives us the option.
I left it open so we could discuss it.
Yeah, I appreciate your work, certainly appreciate your approach here. I think, couple things, one, um, overtime, doesn't matter whether it's cash or comp time, I, I just think we've got a. Probably a little angle here, correct me if I'm way out in left field. Overtime is what we're talking about. How an employee chooses to take that overtime is different.
Different.
No, my, my assessment on this was, we, 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 the county, will not pay an exempt employee additional money.
Okay, well, I'm talking about money, I'm talking about overtime hours.
Okay, and I didn't want to use overtime hours, because overtime applies time and a half.
Okay.
Comp to me is, I work three hours, way over and above my expectation, I would like to take three hours off to make up for that. That's what I was anticipating. I may not have made it clear, but that's really what I was thinking.
Yeah, and they don't call it overtime.
Overtime to me implies time and a half, and I'm not.
Yeah, see, and it doesn't to me.
Okay.
To me, cash payment of overtime indicates time and a half. To me, an employee can, can choose something, I wanted to ask counsel about, according to FLSA, I think it's the employee's choice.
Correct, it is.
Uh, to take their overtime either as a cash payment or as comp time. Now, to me, it's overtime and then broken out into cash or.
That's a non-exempt.
Except a non-exempt.
Cement, except an exempt, you can't take it.
This is semantics. It clearly says.
If an exempt can't take it, then we wouldn't be having this discussion.
They can't take the time and a half, but it, it's just make up time.
Our policy says no overtime for exempt employees.
Right, it's not overtime.
Stop right there, and that's why I was suggesting we amend it for extraordinary circumstances. And, and we can change the name from extraordinary. I understand that, I have a problem with that, and I have no issue with that.
Yeah, I just, uh, either it is or it isn't, or we get into some gray area, which that's where we're headed, is to some gray area. Our policies and procedures, and you mentioned it right here, exempt employees are not entitled to overtime or comp time.
Right.
Done. Do we want to live there? That's black and white, very clearly.
And, and that is certainly one of the options we take. None of this comes into play if you work extra hours because of, it's a duty or responsibility. Thank you very much, we expect our professionals to do that. And my thought was, since this question had come to us, and it was confused for what potentially could have been just part of the scope of the duty. Maybe it's appropriate and the honorable thing to do to allow an employee who really does, above and beyond, and you notice the way I wrote the words, for the benefit of the county, above and beyond the job description, and I made it, you really stuck your neck out, you really did more than you could have easily said, I'm not gonna do that, it's not part of my job, but you did. We then have an option of rewarding them if we choose to. That's kind of what my, my mindset was. We're not trying to sell the program.
No, it's okay.
Tell you what my mindset was.
And, and in fact, we, we are a government agency, an extension of the state office, and I'll bet you a buck, and we could probably ask, a supervisor at a state level that has people working for them that are non-exempt, that's what a word I'm using. They have the discretion to give them time off, at, because they have the authority. You're taking the responsibility, you're making sure they're, they're doing their job. And if they clearly put in more work, it's up to you. It's not, there is no thing that says, by, if you exceed it by three and a half hours, you get to have two and a half hours of comp time or whatever, it's your discretion.
However, our policy.
I know our policy, we can, we can change our policy. It's our policy, that's my point.
That's what I'm suggesting we.
It's not a law that we can't, we control that.
Correct.
And so do these other agencies, that, you know, at least my experience in the government. So we can, we can do that.
Did you have a conversation during the staff report about this?
I did not. And I, I neglected to talk about this there for a while, but I'll be happy to in a minute, if you'd like me to, I beg on you, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Uh, yeah, I just struggle with a couple things, um. The statement says exempt employees are not entitled overtime or comp time. However, well, there can't be however if that statement is true. Now, if we say, under normal circumstances, exempt employees, you see what I'm saying? We're gonna get caught somewhere with, you said they're not, but now you say they might be.
And that's where this line comes in, and I agree, this probably, that line probably ought to be changed.
Because it's in here too, but that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, Bill's got the sheet, I do not have.
The sheet right here. Starts right.
Right.
There under.
Raise your hand.
Right.
Yeah, so, and, and that's why I, I use, and, and I'm fine, the word is not important to me, I used. me. I used extraordinary circumstances.
Right.
Because under normal circumstances, I expect you to do your job. But if it's over and above, an extraordinary circumstance.
Now, we have a question in the public here. She may be useful for advice. She's an elected official that, or an official that has the same issue.
May I, will you ask for public comments, sir?
Uh, we will, yes.
Okay. I might be able to help you understand the difference between exempt, non-exempt, hourly salaried, because those terms are very confusing to most people.
Go ahead.
So an exempt employee is somebody like myself. So I'm paid a salary. In my contract, it says in my, I'm expected to work from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. However, I know there's going to be different things that I need to do. And just like Teresa. So we are, we are hired to work 40 hours a week, but we might work one week 60 hours a week. What we do to have a work-life balance is we will say, hey, why don't you come in late? Do whatever. Again, that's what we do. And this is what healthcare does as well. Okay?
At the discretion of the boss.
Correct. Okay. So your non-exempt employees are your hourly employees. You're the only ones who are entitled to overtime, which is time and a half. So they're the ones that clock in and clock out. So they, so there's that difference. So I would agree that your policy is very confusing. It's very muddy. And there's no, there's no direction with that. But just to clear, because I heard some, you were thinking it was overtime and I could clearly understand that you knew it wasn't overtime and that, Bill, you weren't sure. So it's those two things. And again, generally, when you're salaried, so you're exempt, right? That means the rules don't apply to you.
Right.
It's that, it's that, you know, if, so if it's the election night and the expectation is somebody's here till midnight, that's part of the expectation of the job. So probably she's going to come in late. And probably not the next morning because she's still kind of crazy about it all. But the expectation is over the next week or however that might look, that might be balanced out. However, there are lots of employees that, that's where they, that's where they are all the time. They kind of like to work 60 hours a week. But the salary generally is based off a 40-hour-a-week salary.
May I respond?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
And you're 100% correct. The only thing that I would question is, I don't believe our policy that we have in effect at this moment is muddy at all. I think it's clear as a bill. No exempt, no overtime, do that story, period.
Except I thought you said, and of course, I don't see, I thought there was a however in there.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm suggesting.
Okay, gotcha.
However.
You gotta make it so.
I gotcha. Okay.
I'm trying to open it so exactly what you're saying could occur. Because right now, the policy would not allow Kelly, I mean, she didn't call in sick. She has other options. She won't have Kelly. I'm not picking on you, of course. She's the consummate professional. There's no doubt whatsoever. But any employee, they work till midnight to get a project done. Let's do it the next day, you know. And us being their supervisor, I don't think any of us is going to go, you know, if you came in at 10:30, 11:00 the next morning, we're going to really care.
Sure.
Or even no. But that's not allowed in the policy today. That's what, that's what I took on as an issue.
I gotcha.
And I personally have never seen it written out, you know, to specify it because it's always been assumed. You have the authority. This is exempt employees.
Clear in the policy.
I know. I'm not talking about our policy. I'm talking about.
I apologize, Bill.
Other agencies that they've never taken the time to say, okay, now, you know, we know that you'll be working a lot over, you know, in your job, you could be spending 100 hours. And then in that case, you're okay to take time if your supervisor lets you do it. But usually, it's because you're a professional and you are in that position, you are the leader. And if it becomes a case of where it's abused, that, that becomes publicly known. You could, you could, you could be abusing the system. That, that's up to the boss then to nail that person who's saying, you know, I came in late because I stayed up. You know, I like the idea of having some reason why you're not coming in or if not. And then you could do that. But I've never, ever seen a person nail policy in the government that says, for example, we know you're going to work beyond above, like in a spaced launch, some case, you know, these guys are engineers or professionals that are exempt or non-exempt, you know. And, and so that's pretty clear. They're going to spend overtime and not get reimbursed, but they don't have to come in at certain times. Their boss knows. And they're covering the office to make sure that they know that guy isn't going to be around. And so we'll compensate for that with another guy picking up his slack.
I just want to let you know, in my career, I've seen both sides of this. I've seen it work well. And I've seen the abuse that can happen. One of the things, yes, that can happen when you have this, that you're willing to award an exempt employee compensated time that they will work over. So the biggest definition I see for you as a board of county commissioners is determining what is a reasonable expectation for Kelly's position. What is the normal expectation? Because I can tell you, everybody always remembers when they work the extra hours, but they never remember the half an hour they took extra for lunch. Or the, you know, all of those different things. And, and so one of the things in one place that I did is we actually started having salaried exempt people utilize time clocks. And so we were able to establish then, what is normal? What is normal for that position? What is normal? Then it's easier to track if there's something that is like totally extraordinary. So I just want to throw that out there because right now you're making a policy.
I appreciate what you're saying. And when you go back to what is normal, you go back to the job description.
Exactly.
And that's, and that's, and that's where we go here. And it's all based on your job. If your job description is to say, you're going to, you know, handle elections aside from all the other clerk, I expect you to be here till the election's over and that kind of thing. So I think it is pretty clear, what is your expectation? And more importantly, you knew that when you took the job. Kelly should, did or should have known, and I'm just picking on you, Kelly, that there would be some times when there's an election or something else that she was going to have to work overtime. And that's just part of my job.
Longer than normal.
Okay. So that's, that's what, sorry.
Go ahead, Becky.
Just to discuss another practice, I've spent many years in Fortune 500 as well. So the question I have is, do we have, do we, you guys gentlemen, have discretion as far as merit increases when we're looking at annual salaries? So if the answer is yes, that's typically where this is addressed, actually, is that yes, your job was defined and you were salaried and all of that. Now, you have gone above and beyond and you have that performance review with a manager. And then they can make the argument that your overall merit increase should be more based upon that rather than messing around with kind of comp time and.
Yeah, attempt.
Yeah. I get that particularly, and you mentioned it, sir, Office of Emergency Management is probably the biggest point where somebody's going to end up, although IT, GIS, could be finance, although, could be putting in a significant number of hours doing something else outside of their normal scope. So I get that. I understand that.
But, I'm sorry, to me, that's that line.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I have a hard time not speaking, but when I think of something. But it's that, and every other task deemed necessary by the county.
Right.
So I don't know how you can consider this outside of the job description.
That's why it's at the discretion of you.
That's why it's down at the bottom. I've signed, every job description I've signed that has been on there. So I know that occasionally I'm going to be asked to do something that's not in this normal one. But they may ask me to step up to the plate. That's just part of the job.
Maybe.
I did it in my professional career many times without ever being asked. It was part of the job. You didn't expect it. If, I can't argue with where you're coming from. You did exactly what we asked. So don't misunderstand what I'm saying. I just don't like this living in this gray thing. If we want to live in gray, then get the black out of here. If that's how, how we're going to run this deal. If it's going to be black and white, then leave the black and white in there. But I understand we want to be fair to our employees as well.
That's why I think you'd have to keep it simple. Get the black out. And it's at the discretion of the supervisor if required, if you're, go beyond what we try to cover in the job description.
Go ahead.
Awfully arbitrary. I think you do your, your employees a disservice by not being black and white. Because they don't know what to expect. And they say, well, he went and sold his, his overtime or his comp time to the, to the threesome. He's a better salesman than I am. And, or they like him more. I mean, it just, it could be.
Could happen.
Ugly.
But you still have the same issue.
I agree. It'd be really nice if we could make it all black and white. But the world's not black or white. And I think that's why they put it in writing. And then we decide whether this truly was part of your job or beyond the scope of your job. And I'm going to go back to IT, for example. The sheriff, I don't believe our IT manager is responsible maintaining the sheriff's computer system. However, we all know that if the sheriff's system is not working right, this county is in a lot of trouble. So he gets a call at 10 o'clock at night. And they say, hey, our 911 system went down. We can't figure what's going on. Vern, please come over and help us. Vern, being the consummate professional, I know would go absolutely. I'll be there as soon as I put my pants on. Okay? And he runs over there and he spends three hours fixing it. It's, it's for the county benefit, but it's way beyond the scope of his job description. And he comes in and says, I spent three hours working extra. I'm going to come in next Tuesday at 11:00 or 12:00 or whatever he says. Are you okay with that? That's where I'm coming from. And I'm not trying to sell this program. I'm fine with black and white. Vern, you're a professional. I expect you to do it. That's just part of your job. But it all started with the, I think it was 80 hours, one of the employees took comp time, that we questioned whether that was appropriate or not. So I was trying to come up with a method of, first of all, you yourself don't make the decision whether you get comp time. And B, it has to be something way beyond the scope of your job description. That's where I was coming from. And I'm not selling this program. You want to leave it the way it is. I'm fine with that.
Well, our policy says, number one, there's no overtime given or earned without a supervisor's prior approval.
I understand. That's why we don't form.
That certainly has not been happening. I, with all respect, I would like to ruminate on this a little bit. I don't know that you were expecting a decision anyway.
I am not.
So I would like to move on.
Matter of fact, I agree with you. And we could actually get it from a policy point. We ask, ask some other agencies, what are they doing? What, you know, let's get a.
Other counties, you mean?
Yeah. And I'll tell you why. We could nitpick this thing to death and get all three of us in the room together and then decide to give Vern the day off the day he did it. How's that going to happen? We going to have a public meeting? We going to vote? It might be upon the, you know, we have areas of responsibility and each, we could vote to have the authority and each vested in each commissioner to say, okay, you got some road and bridge guys in Canada, take care of Gary. Or Tom, take care of one of the county, whoever, you know what I'm saying? We don't know. We could get wrapped around an axle. Let's find out what some other options are.
And I don't have issue with that one iota. But here's the thing I think about while I was ruminating all over this, because I was all over the board with this at the beginning. Not Vern. But Vern moved on to the White House and he's taking care of the presidents. And another person comes in without the same work ethic as our current IT guy. And he gets a call at 11 o'clock at night and says, I have an emergency. He goes, sorry, go find someone else. I'm sleeping. I'm watching, you know, Doctor Who or whatever. I mean, I know Vern in an instant, because of his professionalism, would jump and take care of anything. But whoever replaces him may not.
It'd be different.
And we couldn't make them because it's beyond a job description. But it's for the benefit of.
Unless we put it in their job at, at times when we need it. I mean, that's how job descriptions are written, you know.
No, you can't give them, I personally don't feel you can ask someone to do something above and beyond the scope of what they're hired to do.
That's my meaning. The scope has to be spelled out. That could mean late hours because there are things that happen in this job. There's an emergency.
Well, I'd like to, I don't necessarily want to table this, but I would like to, to.
Keep, keep working it.
Study on it.
Sure.
Think on it some more. Do a little research. Thank you for your work, Bill.
No, I'm happy to do it. And if you decide not to do anything, that's fine too. We had a healthy discussion and we'll decide what to do. The other side of it, of course, is maintaining that.
Record.
I think that needs to be done. And we can ruminate about that also, how to do that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay. Consideration of the director of OEM position, gentlemen, what, I know we had talked at our last meeting about posting that internally. We had some comment from the public. I would do my motion to do that. So now we're back to square one.
Okay.
Certainly, chair would entertain some discussion about that.
You've thought about it.
If I may take the lead on that, if I may, again, I don't mean to make this the Jake show. I met with Donna Hobbie, our HR in person. I said, Donna, what's the right way to handle this? And she brought out the manner, the policy. And the policy is to attempt to fill a position from within if we have a qualified person. And if we don't, and I'm paraphrasing. However, if we can't find the right person, then we go to the outside.
Okay. I disagree with your paraphrasing, but that's okay.
Go ahead and stream me out.
Read the, read the argument, Tom.
So it's not being tense. It's not what it's written at all. That might be somebody's interpretation. But I don't believe that's what the policy says. But nonetheless.
All right. So.
Well, let's, let's talk about it because it doesn't do us any good. We don't understand what the policy says.
Well, it's very clear. The policy says that Custer County complies, sorry, on the wrong posting. That recognizing the need to fill available positions with the best qualified people, the county may recruit from outside as well as existing county employees. There's no preference of one over the other. It just says.
I understand. If I wanted to get clear, so that we're, it doesn't spell out, go to the county first.
I'm not saying that's not what Ms. Hobbie told you. I'm just saying.
I read it. I read it. I know what it said.
You read the same thing. I want to make sure I'm on the same sheet.
Yeah, I read it also.
Now, I don't believe there's a preference indicated in that statement. That's, I guess I would ask you guys if you do.
I don't think it's, it's not.
Why do you go to the county first?
At the moment. Because I'm going to make a recommendation and then we can decide to go with it.
Okay.
I asked Ms. Hobbie and we got together. And we came up with an email that was sent to every county employee about the OEM position that was available. We gave a deadline of yesterday at 4:00 for individuals to say if they were interested in this position.
So you guys made that decision, you and Ms. Hobbie?
I absolutely did.
Oh, okay.
I absolutely did.
That's what I was wondering.
Now, we did not hire anybody. We just said that we're going to send it out for.
See if we had any candidates here in the county.
Correct. Correct. I got two responses. Do you want me to give names or not names? Does it matter?
Doesn't matter to me. I'd prefer not at this point.
Okay. One person has an unbelievable amount of experience.
Okay.
The second person is a wonderful person. It's a lady. I know her. She works over at the sheriff's department. However, and I have her information that, I was the contact. If you're interested in applying to this job, please call Jay Prentice. And here's the number. And when I got the calls, I would say, please write down, it doesn't have to be a formal resume or anything because you're already a county employee, but tell me why you feel you're the appropriate person for this job and why the county should hire you, what you could bring you to the table. Okay?
So the reason you and Jackie did that was just to get a feel for what the pool was before we did anything?
I wanted to know if there was a county employee that A, wanted the job and B, was qualified for the job. Okay? So I got paperwork from two people.
What went?
And it's missing.
Jay, let me ask you. So did we withdraw the motions last time?
Yeah.
Are we still, we withdrew a motion?
There's no motion.
There's no motion to go put a resume or a request out yet, right?
This is.
I'll explain why in just a second.
So two, two big responses. Okay. Question I have for you now is, do you want to go outside the county and publish it in the newspaper and see if we can attract other people? Are we satisfied that one of the two candidates we have now is the most qualified person to fill the job? And that's my question to you.
I'm going to ask you to hold off just a second.
Absolutely.
With all respect. So get where you're coming from, I think. Correct me when I start going off the rails. With all respect, my perception here is that you and Ms. Donna circumvented the commissioners by deciding on your own that you were going to post this internally. Is that a correct assumption?
No.
Okay.
No. I feel our policy says that we can fill a position from within. And we took that avenue.
We being a commissioner and.
We being the county.
Well, the county didn't have any input on this.
Well, on the county.
You and the resource person did, correct. Which I take, I got an issue with that. Which I take, I got an issue with that, Jay, to be honest with you, respectfully. I hope you're...
We signed a motion.
Uh, okay. I would not have made this decision on my own to decide that we're gonna, that we as the county are gonna post this internally before we do anything else, especially in the light that I personally withdrew the motion at the last meeting not to post it internally.
Well, we were...
We never made a motion.
We didn't make a motion to even post it anywhere, right?
Sir, if I knew that you did not want this posted internally, this discussion would have taken place before I did it, I do not believe that was part of the motion.
Well, we didn't have a motion. If you withdrew it, there was zero motions to do anything about the position.
Well, you're talking about the initial emotion.
Well, but...
Not the emotion, sorry.
But we ended the meeting without any action on it.
Correct.
And that meant no motion, no action to either post internally or externally. We were gonna discuss it again.
That's exactly correct.
Is that right?
The motion read to post OEM position internally through close of business June 5th. Then it was withdrawn and then it was to be put on today's agenda for discussion.
So that's what I meant. So there was no motion to do anything, right, as a county?
That's correct. There wasn't a motion to indicate an action, so...
So now we're discussing it.
If I took an action outside of what we agreed, that is on me and I am appropriate in doing that.
And I believe that's the case. I don't, I'm not hammering you to death on it. I'm just stating my perception.
So from our perspective, then, we need to discuss what we're gonna do with this position. Are we gonna post it only internally?
Well, it's already been done. That's the problem.
Well, no, it probably hasn't. Officially, well, no, officially, Don, we haven't done anything.
Did you post it internally?
Yes.
Then that has been done.
Now, wait a minute. Now, wait a minute. No, I just agree with what you're saying, because there's two phases to it. There's an internal and an external. I took the internal route, and now I wanna know, should we go with the external route? We asked internally, is there anybody interested? Do we wanna post it in the newspaper to see externally, is there anybody? I feel it's two phases, and I don't feel I did anything wrong.
I agree that it's two phases. I think the county commissioner should have decided both of those phases, not a commissioner. That's all I'm saying.
And if I was to set my bounds, I was, I could tell you.
I'm not arguing that it's not a two-phase thing. I agree with you. I understand that 100%. That's what I said. We've already done one phase.
And we could have gone one or the other, really. I mean, it's up to us however we wanted to post it. We just haven't had that discussion, in my view, whether it's internal only or whether it's external only or whether it's both.
Go ahead, ma'am.
My question is, this email that went out, was the job description attached to the email?
Yes.
So that it was, yes, so it was posted. How long, how long was it posted for?
I don't remember.
Because usually in customer areas, it's at least three days, so that's usual in customer areas.
It was four or five days.
Okay. And then I heard you ask that you asked one of the candidates some questions about their qualifications and why...
I guess both of the candidates.
Oh, perfect. That's what I was gonna ask. Perfect, then, yeah. That was my question, is if you sent it, and, because I absolutely understand that you would send an email out to kind of test the waters, see if anybody is interested, but if the job description was attached. Although, if you don't, I think there might be a little caveat here. If it's not officially posted, an email doesn't make it officially posted, it's saying...
Yes, it does, in our policy it does.
Oh, in your policy it does?
I thought we had...
Okay.
You mean, any one commissioner could send an email to anybody? See, that's my point.
She asked, "An email, can an email be posted?" And I answered, "Yes, it can."
Well, it can, if commissioners all agree that that's what they're gonna do, but one guy...
Well, that's my issue. We just did not come to agreement on how we were gonna go about this and that. Commissioner Prince and Ms. Hobbie did this on their own.
Don't blame Ms. Hobbie.
Okay.
I did it.
All right, then that is my, that is my issue.
Okay.
Am I saying what you did is, the intent is wrong? No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying I think you operated outside of the purview of us as Board of County Commissioners.
I get it. I get it.
So then the question is, I think Commissioner Kendall was getting to, isn't it? So now where do we go from here, based on what has happened? And certainly, I think, I think the conversation about that is appropriate. I would ask counsel if he has anything to add as well, anytime now or during the discussions, or if you'd be more than welcome.
No, I mean, I'd agree with your position that it, the decision whether it should have been posted internally is a decision that the three of you should have made together. I mean, it's been done, but it was not according to the way the county does business, so that can be withdrawn. And with an explanation, maybe apology to the people who, the two that did apply, but I think now you need to make a decision where you wanna go with this.
So legally, there's no reason why it has to be either internal and we only did that, or whether it has to be posted worldwide? Is that a...
It's still your decision.
It's still our decision, either case.
And as you said, it's not a preference. It's the way that it reads is that the county may recruit from outside as well as an existing county employee. It sort of suggests maybe we should do it to, you know, offer it to the county first, but it's not a requirement. I mean, you could decide initially to just post it. But now the decision is for you to make as to whether you want to offer initially to an employee that already works for the county or whether you wanna open it up to the whole world, you know, to that gentleman that was here that suggested there are a lot of qualified people out there. He was here for something else, but he, you know, he felt like he wanted to chime in on that, so that's, I think, one of the reasons why you did not take any action last time. You have to decide now if that's what you wanna do. That's your decision. You aren't committed to it. The fact that it was posted by email to the county employees, they don't have an absolute right to say, "Sorry, you did it that way," so now you've gotta choose between the two
Your preference, sir?
My preference?
I would like to hear that, yes.
My preference is to do, first of all, I apologize to both of you for all the dead my bounds. It was never an intent. I really truly felt that an internal email to see who was interested and why was part of, and the point of contact for HR was part of my, based on the policy, was part of my responsibility. And I took that. Now, if the three of us wanted to say we should have, in conjunction with that, simultaneously put it out to the newspapers, I'm not disagreeing with you on iota. Still feel if that's what your preference is, we still could put it out in the newspapers. We know what the answer is from the two county employees. Tell me how you feel comfortable with this, if you're uncomfortable with the way I went. I don't know the answer. I read it that, let's see who from in the county is interested and then we have this discussion to determine, where do we go from here?
All right, let's...
I don't feel I really went overboard, but if you feel I did, I apologize.
My question is, Dan, thank you for that. My question is, do you wanna share with us what your preference is of how to proceed?
I will share with you my preference. Okay. My preference is that we have an employee who's in the county now, who has demonstrated beyond any reasonable doubt my life, this person's understanding of the job, capability of the job, has done the job, understands the nuances of the job, has applied for the grants, knows how to do it, and has done it. And I was thinking in the shower this morning, whatever that is, even if, even if the most qualified person from Washington DC, who makes $250,000 a year as the emergency manager somewhere else, walked in and said, "I have these great degrees and I have done this forever." I still would go with the person who I know has proven to me to be the proper person. So my breath, my, my choice would be, I would like to offer the job to the employee who has proven to us that Ed's a shake. She is the correct person. She's earned the position. She has demonstrated beyond any reasonable doubt, in my mind personally, that she is totally qualified, can do the job better than, I think, a stranger coming in. My preference would be, let's just fill it from within. However, I will defer to what you folks wanna do.
Okay. You gotta be careful, because we haven't posted it, and we're saying, we're making a selection here, it sounds like. So we have to be careful on our process. All I...
My preference is...
I know, but maybe we shouldn't. But my point here, here's, let's pretend none of this ever happened. Usually, the incumbent has a leg up, especially if it's a very well-qualified person and if that person wants the job. So to me, advertising it, just advertising it, puts the people who are internal and external on notice, if you wanna try, give it a shot. It's the selection board that really takes into account everything you just said. And usually, a person that works with the current job, with all the people that are involved in that job and the process and all that, certainly would have a leg up. And then there's certainly the cost in whether it would attract anybody that would be even overqualifying, if you got a realistic piece on that. But that would be taken into account on who we get back and the timeframe they got to apply. I think to be on the up and up, it's probably not a bad idea just to publish the darn thing and let the process actually work, you know? Especially if you have a small pool of people to draw from. So I understand what the point was, but I really do know that practically, and for the expertise-wise, I think the incumbent has a big leg up, no matter what. And if there's an issue we'd have with their two incumbents...
Please understand, I answered the question that was asked me, what would your preference be? That would be my preference. However, I'm not gonna argue the process needs to take a different step. If we branch should, I'm not gonna argue that.
So now the clock's ticking. What's our timeline? Want to try to get it replaced?
The current OEM manager leaves tomorrow, so it's almost irrelevant. There's not gonna be OJT on-the-job training, 'cause she's leaving tomorrow.
So, here's my perspective on a couple things. One, obviously, I made the motion to post it internally, because at the time, I thought that was probably the right thing to do. Certainly, it was a very mind-jarring reminder when a gentleman in the crowd said what he said to us as a commission. That one statement was enough for me to change my mind. That's why I withdrew the motion. I believe that, that this job is no different than any other job in this county, that it should be posted and we should hire the best applicant that we have the opportunity to hire. If we circumvent that, then I think politically it opens up for criticism of not being willing to look outside of the county. Is that shortsightedness or not? I don't know that. There's about 90% of what you said, Commissioner Prince, that I agree with. I just struggle with the process.
Let me, let me comment on that, because you're right. That's a very good point. In industry and in the government, people are groomed from a point of view for, for the next position up. You know, they look for what are, what are possibilities and who would fit that. Doesn't mean that you're gonna get it necessarily. It just means you've got pretty good, you're trying to expand your candidate pool a little bit and getting people in there. So, it's not unheard of to secession plan and think about what, what is the possibilities, you know, like the next road boss, for example, or who would be the next treasurer, or the next, not treasurer, but HR or whatever. So I think we have the discretion. I don't think we're gonna get, I don't think it's illegal to post it internally. I don't think we would open ourselves up to some criticism branch, branch. And Clint, is it, what do you think?
It's our policy.
It's our policy.
Do it either way.
Either way.
And that's just a policy. It's not a law that requires you do one or the other.
Right.
One of my concerns is that this position doesn't stay vacant very long, particularly this time of year. Go ahead.
At that last meeting, there was discussion, at the last meeting, there was discussion of a salary range, and that was one of the things that, that was waiting until this meeting so that you would have a salary range. So, has that been decided?
No.
That's what we need to consider. I think all goes with, if we're gonna post it, what'll we post it?
Well, the max, I mean, what's required by the Fair Labor Standards Act is that it has to be the $47,000 and change that's the minimum required. And I think that's, as I understand, that's where our outgoing OEM manager was, so I'm assuming that that would be the top. And that's, I suppose that's another thing. Are you gonna attract some highly qualified person who said, "I'd like to retire up there and, but if the job doesn't pay $150,000 a year, it's not worth my trouble," so that's what won't happen.
Yeah, I can't quote you the exact salary of our outgoing...
But the position, the office has more than that.
Tony gave me that number, it's $47,000 something. I don't remember exactly, but right in that range.
Without benefits?
Because with benefits, it was $55,006.
Right.
About that.
Got the... So, I agree that there, if we're gonna post it any differently than it already has been, then obviously, I think we need to post a salary range in there as well.
So how do you wanna go about it?
Can you forward us the email that you sent?
Do you wanna discuss the salary range before we decide how we're gonna post it?
No, I'm just saying that it needs to go with it, in my opinion.
Sure does.
See if I can find that.
Seems like the budget allocated a position and a half, didn't it? So the actual blockout money can be one or the other, not hire somebody else.
And to you ladies, I apologize. This, this is one of the prices we pay for not being able to have these discussions outside of this meeting.
I always learn.
We will.
It's good to see the process.
Well, the second cup of coffee's gonna go walking out the door here, and I'll be right back.
It was sent on May 31st.
I'll be right back.
All right, we'll be right here. We'll be right here.
So $56,000 and $747.
There was no salary posted in there.
Did you send it to us as well, sir, or not?
I didn't.
And if not, could you send it to me real quick?
I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
I believe Donna sent it to everybody who has an email in the county.
I did not send it, but...
Let me check right this second. Find it again.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Not because he's over. I support the discussion here around having this be more of an open and competitive process. I do also agree with his comments about, you know, when you have internal people, incumbents, they absolutely, there's a lot of weight to that and that it's kind of up to the selection committee to base that. My observation here, as being a full-time resident now for a little over a year, is that there are some nepotistic tendencies in some of the hiring in the county positions. And I'm not saying that, again, people groom for positions or that you know, in fact, are are some nepotistic and xenophobic tendencies in, in some of the hiring practices. And at the same time, you never know, people who move here, they don't always expect their same six-figure compensation. Sometimes they want to serve in positions, and they're more than willing to accept those offers anyways.
We have filled the time mark. This is not, this would not be something, I'm not saying to do this.
There's, there's, stop talking about that.
There has been precedent that positions have been filled within without being posted to the public. And to me, considering the circumstances, I felt this could be one of those that we'd want to do it again.
Okay. All right, yes, ma'am.
So I'd like to speak on two things. So I've been in the position where I was put into a position because the people that I worked with thought I was the most qualified. And indeed, what I found was there was somebody else out there that was more qualified, that I wish would have had the job because they would have done a better job than I. So if you've got two candidates, I would recommend or ask that you interview those two. And I would also ask that you open it up to whoever, whether you put it in the local papers, see what happens. If, if the local person is going to shine, they're going to shine regardless of who's in the pot.
Right, that was my, I agree.
So, and the thing is then, then the candidate that's selected is number one. And that's off of all the applicants that you get and all the interviews that you get. And then there's no hesitation in their mind either to say, "Yep, they picked me, I'm number one of the four, six, or however, you know, however many candidates there were." So again, I've been put in that situation. I didn't fail, but I didn't do as well as somebody else could have done. And then I was in other situations where I applied, I won the job because I was the best candidate, and at that time, I was the best candidate. So that made me feel that it was a very fair...
Process.
Process. So I reckon, I, I definitely recognize what she's saying. So to eliminate any perception of favoritism...
Or nepotism.
Or nepotism or anything like that, the candidate that I believe you're speaking of is going to shine. I know they're going to shine because I, I agree with you because I, I think I know who it is, and I think they're going to shine. But there might be somebody else that has a brighter sun, and then that person is going to realize, wow, they're a better fit than I.
Point well taken, thank you.
So are we talking money or are we talking posting it?
Well, I think we need to talk money before we need to talk posting. Here's my opinion. And I think to talk money, we probably need to talk to our finance director as well.
Do you want to...
I don't know, what do you think?
Want to postpone this till tomorrow? Not going to lose too much, and then deal with that.
I think Counselor mentioned to us that there's a minimum for this job.
$47K, whatever it must be.
And I think that's where we ought to...
Don't you post a range or not?
No, you wouldn't have to. You could put a starting, put a starting salary or...
Say not to exceed, 69.
Commensurate with experience, you always do.
Yeah, commensurate with experience, your starting will be based on...
But it's not. I mean, it's...
No, it wouldn't be.
It could be higher, it could be, that's, that's the point.
Just say the salary is.
That's what I would like to do.
Yeah, I, I agree with both of you, and I'm inclined to entertain a motion to postpone or to take, well, probably table it.
Let's table it till tomorrow's meeting. That's what I...
Give some time to visit with...
Is tabling the right phraseology, Tom, or is it...
Uh, that's what I'm trying to sort out. Eat a later, yes, we'll be fine.
All right, let's, is there, have we pushed a lot into tomorrow?
Postpone it.
All right, let's postpone it till tomorrow.
Yeah, as long as there's a time attached to it, postpone it.
Postpone it till tomorrow's meeting.
I'll second that. We moved to second and postpone the OEM director hiring position until June 7th. We may have an issue there, though, because we're not going to make a 24-hour posting notice.
And this doesn't qualify, it's unfinished business.
No, it will not. Just because we decided to quit talking about today, it's not qualified, it's unfinished business.
Well, shoot, I'll move, we post the darn thing at $47,500. Get it on the books.
They already have a motion on it.
You said post, do you mean internally or externally?
No, I'm posting.
There's still a motion?
We got a, all right, so we, I'll withdraw my motion.
What motion is on the table?
It's to table, or to postpone. We moved you second.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll withdraw it.
Yeah, I withdraw my second because I don't believe it's, it's going to be legal for us to postpone it until tomorrow because we will not make our posting requirements. So, so if you care to introduce a motion, you're certainly welcome.
Okay, so I'll move that we post this position effective today, or whatever the minimum was that we agreed to. I think it's $47,500, is that what it is?
I have no idea what that number is. I've never seen it printed.
Then why don't we, we could wait to...
You can pick a number, that doesn't mean we couldn't settle on a number.
With benefits, right? So we could, we could make it simple, $48K plus benefits. Just let it go and...
I'll second that motion.
Could you repeat it?
Yes, been moved and seconded to post publicly the position of OEM with a starting salary of $48,000 plus a benefit package.
Forty-eight is what I said.
Forty-eight. I thought that's what I said.
You did. Okay.
Discussion.
Could we clarify what the post means, please?
Okay, that's post, papers, internally, externally.
Well, it's already been posted internally.
Well, gets to go again.
No, not unless...
Well, wait a minute, we didn't agree, we never agreed as a commission to post it, period. He just put a feeler out.
No, he posted the job via email. Well, if there's some argument about that, let's set that out right now.
That's why I wanted to get clear of you before. I, you know, I looked at it. I think anything we do that's official is the three of us voting to do it. He elected to do it. To me, that was a feeler to me, or a mistake.
I apologize for what I did. I do, hang on a second. I do not feel it was a mistake. I felt it was in my purview, based upon a position that's open. I met with the HR person, and we, the, the policy was clear that internally and/or externally, we didn't do the external. What I was expecting today was to say, we've already heard from internally, let's post it externally if that's what you wanted to do. That's kind of what I expected today, but I'll do whatever you got to come up with.
And that's the motion before.
So we're satisfied we got the candidates internally as a result of your request? Right? That's what we're agreeing to.
No, I'm not agreeing to anything. I'm considering your motion.
Yeah, my motion was to post it.
To post it. And Commissioner Prince's question was, how do you want to post that? Is that correct? So let's deal with that and not throw out a lot of blanket statements on behalf of this commission. So I'm assuming that your motion was, the intent was certainly for both newspapers?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Why? We have a paper of record. If the second one wants to post it, they certainly will, I mean, publish it, but that's their choice.
You're right, it's, we're going to publish it in our, our paper, right, and we, it's...
Well, it's up to you.
I'd put it in the...
It was your motion. Okay. Yeah, we're way outside of the legitimacy of our meeting here, but I'll allow it. Go ahead.
I would just suggest that even for one day, you post it in surrounding newspapers. Again, if you're looking to, to make this fair and equitable, not just the Trib and the Sentinel, but the Salida Paper, the Canyon Paper, and the public.
That's beyond the scope of what we'll do, in my opinion.
Okay.
Now, they may want to. That is, we are Custer County.
Okay, and then also on the county website, it should be on there as well.
That would, I would concur with that statement, certainly, that it should be on our, our website. But this is what we've got to decide, whether we're going to post it.
So my motion is exactly that, the two papers, the website, and cut it out.
Cindy Howard volunteered to track down the information that posted on the state OEM website. Do you want to pursue that or not?
I'd consider it. So make the amendment if they want.
And then, what length of time were you thinking? I consider it still your motion, so...
It is, and I would...
Well, it's not, because I seconded it and restated it.
Right.
It's not your motion, it's our motion.
It's our motion, and it's normally at least a week, I would think, right? Seven, five working days or...
Yeah, I thought I read in the policy that it had to be a minimum of three days, but I can't find it right now, so...
Well, it won't come out in the paper.
Won't come out this week until next week, so it's going to be...
I think the three days was very internal.
Oh, yeah, I bet you're right, yeah, that's right.
So whatever, whatever timeline meets the criteria, two weeks would do it. So that'll, that'll be my motion.
Can I say one other thing here? Just, you know, that salary that we were paying was based on what everybody thought the, was going to be the law. The actual law that was finally passed, the minimum salary for an exempt employee is So it was considerably less than what had been talked about.
Sure was, yeah, thank you.
We just replaced the one we had, so I'm leaving it.
Wasn't there something about that particular position? It was before you guys came on. I don't know if Jay was on or not, but...
But that never passed.
Oh, okay. Because it was going to be $85,000.
And that's why they did it, and then it didn't pass.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
So if we're looking at two weeks, sir, for your motion, then probably we're looking at June 21st of, or a deadline to submit applications.
And that gets it into us for the next meeting.
That would be posted in the local papers twice. So we're looking at $13,000 more than what the law requires for a minimum starting position, or starting wage for that position. Further discussion? Public comment? Now we can have, oh, wait, we already have had...
Could you repeat the motion for me?
Motion is to post a job opening for the OEM manager position at $48,000 a year plus benefits to be posted, and the applications deadline is close of business on June 21st.
Took the last one. That's Friday.
Further discussion? This is an exempt position. And is $48,000 a fair salary for starting position? This is my question to you two gentlemen.
I think it is, starting.
Does this job require a college degree?
Yes.
Have to look at it.
I think it's done.
This is such an important position in our county. I was really going to just shut up and let you guys do it, but it's such an important position in this county. And I'm not, I'm not saying this because of a particular candidate I have in mind. It has absolutely nothing to do with it. To get the right person, we need to pay a reasonable, fair fee. In this day and age, for the county, that's a lot of money, but in the world, it's nothing.
And do you gentlemen recall, not that I'm comparing them, it's just an analysis of what our starting wage for a dispatcher is.
No comparison.
Twenty-seven.
I think it was thirty...
Thirty-five.
Can we still do public comment?
You may.
Is it, is it legal or appropriate to put minimum starting wage, 48, and that gives you the flexibility to go forward with posting, but then also gives you the time to go and research a little bit, determine what would be a fair wage?
Right, like, like counties that might have the same number of residents, what they may be paying their OEMs, whether it's full-time, part-time, how that might look.
Problem is with that, you've got a good point. The problem is when you put a minimum down, then you lose people that might want to come for 60K.
Because it's not supposed to be a commission, or not everybody.
Well, and they don't have to negotiate.
Right, seriously, you don't have any negotiation. There's no negotiation. If you just say, "This is a salary," then either I'm interested in that salary, or I'm out because I know I'm worth more, and I want to counter your offer of 48 to 49.
Right, usually there, you, they come in, you do negotiate, that's true.
Typically, yeah.
And it would go up. They, you know, they come in, they mean agree. I don't think we're limiting it.
Well, no, you're saying that it's the start salary.
Oh, well, we're advertising it at that. We don't have to say, starting salary.
So I'm saying, minimum.
You just say, it's advertised at that.
And it's commensurate with experience is the other part of that, so...
Yeah, usually you do negotiate, everybody comes in.
Your motion is $48,000.
Yeah, and how do we phrase it so you can negotiate it up or, or even down, really?
Well, then you've got to lower it.
Yeah, you've got to lower the floor.
Starting at?
Yeah, post it at the $48K.
You can always do the caveat negotiable, commensurate with experience.
You just say commensurate.
Starting at four years.
$48K, commensurate with experience, you don't say negotiable.
Okay, well, either way, maybe.
That signals, though, that it's an option.
Right.
Group's pleasure.
I'm good with that.
An amendment?
Yeah.
If you'd like to...
So it would be $48K, commensurate with, how are you saying? Commensurate, commiserate.
Or we could commiserate. Maybe that, too. You might be doing that, you might need to do both.
So you'd like to amend the motion by adding that?
Yes, yep.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. We moved to second it to amend the main motion by adding the words commensurate, salary commensurate with experience.
Would that be no numbers in there?
Correct. $48,000 already in there.
Oh, okay.
Starting at.
Or, the wording should be or commensurate with experience.
Problem.
Discussion, or an amendment? Gets a little funky, and that's, I just think this signifies to us how many holes we have in our processes in this county. It's just ludicrous and very frustrating for me, but counsel, if we, if this amendment passes and the motion passes in this, and we post this job at $48,000 or commensurate with experience, does that mean we have to pay more if somebody has experience?
No.
We can consider their experience and an increase.
Right, and consider their request. You don't have to even honor their request, or even if they have a lot of experience.
Further discussion? Public comment?
Did you have a second on that amendment?
I did.
Yes.
I seconded it. Hearing now, we proceed to vote on the amendment which states to add or commensurate upon experience. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Further discussion on the main motion, which reads start at $48,000 or commensurate with experience. And benefits, sorry, yes. No further discussion on the motion as amended, public comment? Hearing now, we proceed to vote, all in favor of posting this job at $48,000 a year plus experience, or plus benefits and commensurate upon experience to, with a deadline of June 21, close of business. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Oh, carries. Commissioner Prince, that's the point of contact. You knew I was going there.
I knew you'd be there.
Would you like to pursue this, or would you like someone else?
Oh, no, I would be delighted to pursue this. I have no issue whatsoever.
I didn't think you did, that's why I...
I'm a professional, because I, if I get something out of my bounds, I told you. However, this is still my, my deal, and I'm happy to do what I need to do.
Okay, thank you, sir. I assume that would be your position. All right.
What about that?
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Who is the interview committee? Who is the, who is the board?
We are commissioners, yeah.
And Donna, that helps, right?
Yeah.
I would like, as a, as a, as a community member, I would like to recommend that you get a couple of other stakeholders involved in the interview process, perhaps somebody, because this is, this is a, I hear you saying this is a really important position.
Would you like us to manage her?
And I, I want you to interview, but I think it might be worth it to have some folks who would be interacting with this person out there on the street. And I'm not suggesting myself, somebody else from the county, who you might think of maybe from the sheriff's office or from another office, that's good.
Okay, point well taken.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move on, discussion of EMS response in Wetmore.
Wow, hi, guys. Good to see you.
Oh, I didn't know we had it.
Yeah. Yeah, you can't run yet, buddy.
Yeah, you can't go yet, buddy. That's why we've been sitting here all day.
They've been waiting for that.
I need to be excused.
Hello there. Come on, Teresa, come on up here.
I thought we were done, I'm sorry.
No, sir, so.
I didn't mean to pack up like you weren't important.
But you did.
Give me some more than that, I got enough today.
I'll give you.
I'm not in on it.
Thank you.
Okay, were you successful? Are you happy? You got something to tell us?
Well, actually, it was very interesting to me, quite frankly. When we looked, so a couple of things happened. We started to go big, like how, how could, how could this work for the county? One of the biggest things that we found, I say we found, this is our county response area and the Custer County Hospital District. So in 2014, when the, when Custer County EMS went from a voluntary to a paid service, the hospital district boundaries were not
Changed.
Well, they weren't changed, but we've been responding to patients outside of
Way out of their district.
Way out of our district. So on page three.
That's a nice chart. Where'd you get that?
Those are actually in all of the ambulance rigs, dispatch has.
Are they?
Yes, sir. Oh, yeah, they're all over the place. And I apologize, I just brought the one. So page three breaks down for us the calls that we found. So mile marker seventeen east is outside of our district. So you can see in 2018, on Highway ninety-six, we did twelve calls. And then Highway one sixty-five from mile marker one to fifteen, there was fourteen calls and then
And that's inside your district?
Outside. Okay, then these are, these are all outside the district?
All of these?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So, so you've got Custer County responses, and then you've got Florence responses, and then Ry said two. And he said, "Oh, maybe there was one other one," but anyways. So basically, this is a seventeen-month period. So you're looking at a total of seven, seventy-six calls.
So, and I'll make one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Do these overlap with any other jurisdictions, or are these all without any jurisdiction?
These are strictly this map, the area right here. Right, so this is, yeah, the hard scrap is right here.
Certainly doesn't equate to a thousand calls for service.
Oh, no, well, well, hold on a minute. Now, first of all, Florence would never have responded to mile marker one sixty-five. Okay, so in that, I'm sure that thousand calls per year was fire and EMS. Remember, we talked about that last week. So I, I, I believe, and again, their thousand calls per year was for their entire service area, the Florence service area. Not, not just the rest of Custer County. Right, the Wetmore. So again, if you look at the map and you're looking at, again, so really the, the hospital district is just about at, just about at McKenzie Junction is pretty much where the hospital district lies.
Right.
Right about there. So anytime we went down one sixty-five. Again, so that's mile marker one to fifteen.
Oh, I guess that's Bishop's Castle there.
Well, no, no, this is, this is, this is McKenzie Junction right here.
Yeah.
Bishop's Castle's south of.
Yeah, no.
It's clear up in here.
And now Ry Fire has this little piece of the pie where they get paid mill levy money because that's attached to the, to the rez, to the, to the lake.
What does this mean, paid to do this?
No, we're not paid to do any of this.
Why, it green?
Well, because what happened was, is when, when the folks sat down to do this response map, that was kind of what was always happening is EMS was always going there because that's what they did. Outside of the hospital district, Beth was like, "Well, that's what Jen started, so we just continue to do it." So from a person living in the district and paying mill levy money and tax dollars, one might say, "Well, that's not really fair if you go outside the district and you spend the tax dollars that we're giving you to go outside the district." So from my perspective, that was the biggest, oh my goodness, from my perspective, and also from Beth's, because it was a shocker, really. Again, now, we did find maps in the service plan that we wrote, it was last updated. So the Custer, West Custer County Hospital District Service Plan was updated in 2015. The maps in that service plan are black and white. They worked on this, they finished this, the very first CES meeting I went to, which would have been in June or July. They were still working on this last year, so this is a fairly fresh map. But it nevertheless, it's a very good map. So you can see where primary calls and then secondary calls and third calls. So you can kind of see, so when a nine-one-one calls and comes into dispatch, they can kind of go through and see who's supposed to be primary, who's supposed to be secondary, who's supposed to be third.
I can send that map to you in color.
Yeah.
If you'd like to.
Yeah, yep.
Can I just get an overview, just to make sure I understand?
Yes, sir.
EMS is part of the hospital. The hospital is a separate taxi district, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yes.
On this of the
Yes.
Variations.
Yep. So, so then we started to think, okay, so first of all, we're, to do the right thing, we're gonna have to
Figure out where to get some money?
Well, in nine, I'm gonna, we're gonna continue to cover those areas for the next ninety days. And then we're gonna have to figure out what has to happen because it's outside of our hospital district, it's outside of our tax district. And I feel like if I'm a, if I'm a resident here, it was, and it was, I mean, I'm sure nobody did this, you know, with any kind of ill intent. And it's been going on since at least 2014.
So how do you amend a district? Do you have to go to the voting?
Yes, I believe you do, yes, sir.
So are you saying that in ninety days, Custer County residents, your EMS service is not going to service people in Custer County?
No, sir, no, sir.
Okay.
Outside of the hospital district.
Got it.
Yes, sir.
So it's not Custer County?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. No.
I misunderstood.
No, didn't mean, didn't mean to make your heart rate go up. No, absolutely not. And again, Custer County EMS.
Say it again.
We, we have residents that are part of the hospital district that live in Fremont County.
Okay.
Because they're landlocked, the only way they can get in. So they're part of our, how many do we have? Thirty?
Thirty-three lots.
Thirty-three lots that we, we get
Right here.
Mill levy money, yeah, it's that little boot that's up there, that little blue boot.
And do they pay you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you get money from it? Say it again, Lisa.
Yes, sir.
This is not in your district.
No, sir.
Not getting paid to do it. In ninety days, what happens?
In ninety days, we, I feel like we, we shouldn't just stop tomorrow, but I feel like in ninety days
You're gonna stop.
We're gonna need to stop.
Right, that's in Custer County, Jay.
It is in Custer County, but it's outside of our district.
I know, we understand.
Yes, yes, sir.
He's just asking, Custer County?
I ask, Custer County EMS is not going to service Custer County patients who need a service in ninety days if we, if something else doesn't happen. Is that a true statement?
That's what she said.
I'll say it again.
Yes, yeah.
If they're outside of the
If they're outside of our hospital district, which is north, I mean, you can see here, Custer County goes up north all the way on Highway ninety-six, and we don't cover that area either.
You're gonna stop that, too?
We've, we've never gone there.
Oh, you've never?
That's what you're asking us to do.
Why is it in the map?
Well, because, because when we have a map with mutual aid.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a mutual aid map.
I see, that's, okay.
Yeah, and the prime, so again, the primary call folks, so number one call.
Yeah, so let's back up just a minute.
Number two call, number three call.
This call, this map was put together when they went out and got mutual aid agreements with all of the surrounding EMS agencies, because none of us in the rural have enough.
In these little boxes.
So who's primary and who's secondary? So that's what all this map is for.
And if you don't know this, it's not explained on here.
Right.
These numbers are who gets called out first.
Right, so for fire, for, for the orange area, fire, that orange area.
So in this orange area, Custer EMS.
Secondary.
EMS, this was, has been their first.
Right, yes, sir. But it's outside of our
But it's outside of their district.
Yes, sir.
So that won't be on the map in the future?
It's, well, it
It's not on the map.
Well, that's not, right now, it's not on the map. So here's what we did. So we, so, so we talked to JD and said, "So how many properties are there? How might this look?" I actually included his entire email on the back of page two to look at, because our, our first thought was, well, how do we, I'm even interested in just making a wash. How do we incorporate the entire county of Custer County into the hospital district?
By vote of the people.
It has to be, definitely has to be a vote of the people. But the other thing is, is that mill levy money then would extend to there, but that's for the hospital district, not just EMS. EMS, so we have a seven point nine eight mils, and EMS has three mils of that.
So all those citizens will start paying the tax?
Correct. And so according to JD's numbers, and actually, this is the number queen, you've got a, you've got a
Right, so, so on the second page, so we're kind of working this backwards, Lisa.
Yeah, we're working backwards.
We're working backwards.
I know, I'm like
There is the email from JD. And we asked him, we, we came over and brought him this map, and we said, "All of these people are outside." First, I asked the question, "Well, the person who's paying for EMS, who's ever paying the tax money for the EMS service, that's who should be first in line, not us." Well, then JD said, "They're not paying anybody." So those people in that area have never paid into any county or any for emergency services.
All in the orange there.
Well, there's two separate sections.
Pink and orange, pink, orange and yellow.
And yellow.
Yeah, so
But the light green down there did pay?
Light green is where
Yeah, it's a different, yeah, that's Herfino.
That's Werfino County.
You have to understand, this is not the hospital district map.
I understand.
Okay, all right. So we, so we went to JD and we said, "Listen, if we were, if, what if this was part of our district? What kind of tax money is involved in this?" Just to get an idea. Because that's a lot of area to cover, and if there's
Not enough money.
Not enough tax money, that's gonna be very difficult for us. And so that was his email, where he came back and he said, "Well, based on these values, here's what the hospital district as in its, as a whole would get." And so then on the, the next page is just my email back to everybody after I got these numbers that said, "Based on the below, based on the restricted for EMS, EMS would get fourteen, seven oh five, seventy-five, and then county takes five percent." Right, county takes five percent of that to collect on our behalf. So we basically, we get about fourteen thousand.
And so is the conclusion, that's enough?
Well, there's a lot of caveats with this. So we just wanted to show you all the homework that we did. Then in the beginning, that's where we go back to the first sheet, if we're working backwards. Here's, here's potential options. Here's our thought processes. Whether they're the best ones, we're bringing it to you going, "Hey, these are what we talked about internally, but if you guys have ideas, if, if there's a better way to do it, then, because this is, we're speaking on behalf of the hospital district and our responsibility is to the residents who are paying into the hospital district. But we want to be a participant in solving this problem.
So in order for us to make a decision, is adding those people and the tax money that comes enough money to do the job?
We, we don't exactly know yet. Like here's, because the big thing, we're gonna, we, someone's gonna have to pay to have someone that understands all of that better, and maybe JD can, but he's also said that he doesn't understand.
Because this would have to go to the tax break, have to be on the ballot.
Correct.
Right, right.
Yes.
So, so he said, "I don't know what the, because that is such a huge, huge residential area, you don't have any commercial stuff in there, with all this Tabor, Gallagher." He kind of indicated that it might have a negative effect on the hospital district, that we may actually, if we bring in these people, we might actually overall get less money because of the real estate distribution. And so I can't answer your question today because I don't know that.
Is he able to figure that out?
No, he says in his email that he
So who does?
Which, I don't, I don't know that question. I don't know the answer.
Really, one of the considered factors here. Are we talking about doing this for money, or are we talking about doing this for the safety of the residents of our county?
Well, I think, so I think both. So first of all, we're interested in saving lives, that's what, that's why we're doing what we're doing. But in the other, on the other side of that, of that hill is that
For more days.
What's that?
For ninety more days.
Correct. And again, but again, I think there's options.
Hasn't been made yet.
Correct, no, no, right, right. Exactly, this is kind of the findings and kind of where we are gonna need to go because my board of directors doesn't even know yet that we've been supplying EMS services outside of our district. For four, for, for five years.
Real quick.
Yes, sir.
Your district on this county map is signified by this green.
Yes, sir.
This green is different, that's a different shade of green.
Yeah, that's not part of it. Yes, that's correct.
So that's different.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Well
That might be Pueblo or, or
Somebody else's
Somebody else, I think that's Pueblo County.
We've been servicing outside of our area for a lot longer, five years.
Yeah, but no, no, I know that, but from, from when it went to, from a volunteer service to a paid service, and it came back from the county, from the county to the hospital district. Because again, the service plan, the last service plan that was updated was 2015.
But that didn't change the boundary.
It didn't change the boundary of the hospital district.
And Jackie is correct, even in nineteen eighty-eight, when they passed the service plan, that area was not included in our service plan. And the service plan says, "We will respond to this area," and it's right in our service plan, and that area is not there. Yeah, we ran, we ran on that area lots of times, many times. But you know, when you were dealing with volunteer personnel and you were dealing with tax, mill levy money, it was a little bit, but now we're
So what has changed that you don't want to do this anymore?
No, it's, it's not about, well, here's what's changed, Jay, is that, that now as the executive director, I've, I've been, I've made, been made aware that we are providing a service outside of our district to people, to, to residents who are not paying the same portion as somebody who lives inside the district. So I, I have a, I, it's, right, I do have a, a moral challenge with this because I feel like we need to do the right thing for the patients everywhere. But in the same token, if I, and I'm not a resident of Custer County, if I live right there and I pay taxes and mill levy money, and you're telling me, "You're gonna take your rig from here and you're gonna drive way out there, and you're gonna go to take care of somebody who doesn't pay, doesn't help to pay our salaries or help to pay our gas or anything like that." And because of those calls, we don't even know how many of those were transports. We have about a thirty percent non-transport ratio, which means we go out there, the patient said, "Oh, no, I'm good, I don't need to go anywhere."
Don't want to pay the money.
They don't, they, they don't pay anything. Because we don't charge as, as the wheels roll.
So you turn around, come back home. It was a refusal of service.
Right, correct.
So we're utilizing hospital district funds to, to service people that are not, and we're not available for the people that are paying, and so that's just a point.
So if, if a patient is transported, yes, there's a bill that's generated, yes. But if they're not transported, there's no bill that's generated. Now, we would go and if they, if it's, if it's a treat and release, if we go and we do a, do some kind of a bandage, it's a flat fee of a hundred fifty dollars. It's called a treat and release. We just started doing that since I've been there. At first, it was, "Oh, my gosh," because it's, the insurance companies don't pay that, so that's out of pocket, nobody covers that for insurance. But we had to start trying to recouping some of the, some of the dollars that are going out. So, so
Regardless of who it is or where they're at, treat and release.
Yes, sir, a hundred fifty bucks.
Correct. Doesn't matter where.
Correct.
Ambulance goes out to barn.
No, okay, again.
If it's a treat and release.
So treat and release is if, okay. If we do vital signs on you, check your blood sugar, there's no charge. You can just say, "I don't want to go." If we do an EKG on you, put you on the heart monitor. If you've got an open wound, you've got a broken leg, if we splint it, treat and release is a hundred fifty dollars. If you have a nosebleed and we, and we use some medicine to stop that, it's a hundred fifty dollars. Because we, it, it's too time-intensive for the, the amount of runs that we do to this costs seven dollars, this costs ten dollars, this costs this.
Because on our county, that could easily be a two-hour timeout of service.
Yes.
Easy, and typically is, typically is, yes.
Without a legal encounter.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So what do we wanna do now?
So again, so, so we came up, so we did a lot of, of money crunching in that, I don't, we probably need to make some copies of that so they can see that.
Okay.
So the very first page is kinda the ugly page, cause there's numbers on here. So when we crunch numbers to look at, what does it cost us to roll our wheels? Per hour, okay, now, I don't know about you guys, but I was astounded when we, when we did this, cause I was like, okay, but it makes sense to me when we're looking at these things. So, so again, so. We're, we're saying for a hundred twenty dollars an hour, we will respond to calls outside the district, it's a two-hour minimum. And then it's billed up to the, again, this is just the, we've had since Friday to come up with this, so this is just kinda the findings, and maybe. That's why it says suggestions, options, and you might like any of them, you might not like any of them at all. What's that?
Who gets charged?
The board of county commissioners gets charged.
Custer County?
Custer County gets charged.
Unless you guys wanna.
Unless you wanna.
Turn around and bill the residents.
I mean, yeah, you could certainly do that. And then, and the, and the other option is on a, so number two is, we could staff a dedicated ambulance at the Wetmore Fire Department, if they agree to let us use that space.
Or the county could.
Or, or the county could.
Still has the same problem we brought up before, if we do this, then people that aren't paying a tax, or, and the other people are paying, are paying a tax, they're covering it, if we, if we agree to pay you guys, or pay for the service, right? So we haven't gained anything from that point of view.
That's right, the third option is there, you need to go back to that.
Right, so the third off, actually there's.
Just means we use money that everybody else has got.
Well, there, and then option.
Budget for something else.
Right, and then there's option three, which is you can get some mutual aid agreements with the county to have other agencies cover that part of the county.
Which is what we thought we had.
You thought you had?
Sure, Fremont, and then they decided they're all doing it.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, no, that was Florence.
Or Florence, sorry.
Okay, but again, when, when they're volunteers though, that's where the, it gets sticky.
Right.
And then option four is. Adding them to be annexed into the hospital district.
Or, and maybe it's one of these.
Yeah.
Where's option?
Page two, page two, saving trees.
Or ask the residents if they wanna be taxed and pay for their own ambulance down there.
Right, correct.
Option five, right, it wasn't covered in those other.
Well, essentially, essentially, option four is exactly that, because if you're, you're getting them to.
Unless they wanna have their own ambulance.
Oh, sure, oh, sure.
Anex them into your district.
Okay.
Option five would be set up your own district.
Perfect. There you go.
I like it.
Question.
It's the Wetmore Fire Department, under the, Fire Department up here.
No.
Two different things.
Yeah, they're under the county. Yep, so there could be that fifth one.
So is Fire, what is Fire's district, is it different than your district?
Yes.
Before you say it, there's, there's a difference in there, I just understand the difference between annexing and putting them on, isn't that them agreeing to a ballot, says that we're gonna be part of the hospital district, isn't that the same?
Yes, sir.
And I chose that term, whether it was the appropriate legal term.
There really isn't a fifth option.
Oh, yeah, sure there is.
Yeah, because he's suggesting.
Starting their own district.
He's suggesting, a whole separate, the Wetmore Volunteer or Wetmore or whatever.
Ambulance corps.
Pay for their own ambulance corps.
Yep, yep.
You're absolutely right.
That would still require a ballot initiation.
Yep.
It would, it would, they would have to do that, yeah.
Either way, they're gonna pay the tax.
And so. So if you want, how we, we, this is how I kinda approached into it, because even if it goes away, we're gonna lose money, cause we have been responding to that area, so I tried with the, since Friday, with the best numbers that I had. To kinda come up with just a roundabout figure, so on twenty eighteen stats, our gross billable was six eighteen, we have write-offs, bad debt, and we have a collection rate. Now, that's gonna be pretty high for twenty eighteen, and if, if you wanna hear all about it, I'll let you know, but it has to do with bad debt, so I made a big adjustment, so that's not realistic. We, we have been running twenty-nine, thirty percent, we've gotten up to almost thirty-one percent now for collection rates, cause we've been a lot more aggressive. So that's a better ratio to put for normal collectible of everything we bill, so that I just started playing with numbers here, so, but, so let's just go to the grayish area here. So I'm saying of our calls, we had six hundred and four calls, we had two hundred and forty-seven transports, and three hundred and eighty-nine billable events. So if I just take my gross revenue and divide it by the three hundred and eighty-nine, that means every time we, we had a billable event, I got paid four hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirteen cents. So it's a simple math, three eighty-nine divided by one ninety-one, eight twenty-nine. So then I said, now, how does that relate to this area within, that we're questioning? So we're saying that there's four point five a month, times twelve months, because I was going annual, she's got a seventeen month. So calls outside the district are fifty-four runs a year, billable, well, no, fifty-four runs a year. Forty-one percent, based on my percentages that I got up here in that gray area, was transportable runs, sixty-four percent, I actually had some kind of bill, like a treat and release or something. So I just took sixty-four percent of the fifty-four, comes up to thirty-four point seven eight runs, times a four ninety-three, so my potential income from those runs would be seventeen thousand one forty-nine, okay?
Billable, doesn't mean collectible, right, so we go back to your collectible percentages?
It is collectible, because I'm only using my collectible rates, I'm not using gross revenue.
Yep, 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 I already worked it out. That ten percent's already figured out.
So then I said, based on J D, my potential mill levy money is fourteen thousand, and then the potential specific ownership, of course.
What J D gave us, yes, sir.
And I just said, you know what, last year we got, specific ownership was sixty percent, sixteen percent of our property tax, so I just used that percentage, it's just a. And then, so here's my, my total estimated income from that area in a year, if we annex it in, is thirty-three thousand three eighty-nine. Our cost to provide service, which I've been crunching a ton of numbers, we set a very reasonable, with room for growth in there, with staffing and all that kinda stuff, is a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. And that's to cover buying new ambulances, that's just to cover everything. Average run is three hours, because you've either got two hours for the treat and releases coming back and forth, or you've got four hours having to take them all the way down and come back up.
Is it Pueblo or Colorado Springs?
We only go to Pueblo, Canyon or Salida.
Salida.
Yeah, so one twenty times three hours is nineteen thousand four hundred dollars, that's our cost, so my potential additional income, the, the net effect would be thirteen thousand nine forty-nine. So I was just looking to make sure.
Ambulance cost.
Pardon?
That would be hospital district to do whatever.
No, this is just the ambulance side of the hospital district.
Right, just the hospital, yeah, the ambulance.
Just the ambulance side, so, by, based on this.
No, you can't buy an ambulance for thirteen thousand.
Outfits, materials, what, what would you do with thirteen thousand?
What would I do with thirteen thousand dollars, personally? I would give, I would get my employees out of minimum wage, yes, sir, I would give, give my employees.
Well, there's a couple things that's going on here, and that's really getting further drawn, cause if we truly did annex, we might have to start thinking about. Do we need to work on staffing increases even more? If we're, you know, we're already trying to get these to always have a second call available, do we need to ramp it up, do, you know? So there's a lot of things we could do with that thirteen thousand, I was just looking to make sure that we weren't gonna go in the negative by annexing them in.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure we're not gonna lose a ton.
Because it wouldn't be prudent for us as a hospital district to enter into an agreement with something that's gonna make us lose money.
Right.
Okay, so, and again, this is just, I mean.
Increase the taxes.
Huge looking down.
Okay, so if we, let's say that you decide in ninety days, you're gonna continue operating outside your district, that's probably not legal, number one, but. Number two, it's certainly not economically wise for your business, let's say you did that, so we're averaging fifty-four dollars a run, I mean, fifty-four runs a year.
To that area, yes, sir.
Of that area, outside of the district, right, not just Wetmore.
Oh, no, sir, the whole district, so east or south?
Okay, so an average of three hours, so we're, we're gonna assume a run costs you three hundred and sixty bucks. Hundred twenty times three.
Wait, they were using four.
So average is three hour run, you follow where I'm at, hundred twenty times three. So I'm just thinking, alright, so let's say that an average run out of the district costs you three hundred and sixty dollars. You get in the hurry, nothing works.
Right, that's our cost per service, yes.
Yeah, so three hundred and sixty dollars per run, times fifty-four runs, nineteen thousand four hundred dollars.
Right, it's right here, it's nineteen, it's right here, that line, nineteen four four zero, we already did that, sir.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
I didn't get that, you hadn't multiplied it by.
Yeah, cost per service, one twenty per three hour average is nineteen four four zero.
Times fifty-four runs.
I should switch, yeah.
Alright, gotcha, so I'm just thinking, there is option number six.
What's that?
County give you twenty thousand dollars.
We give you twenty grand a year, and you can tend to service outside of your district, is an option.
Well, that's, that's exactly why.
That's exactly why we're, yeah, sure, if you weren't here to, yeah.
That's what I mentioned, we would, other taxpayers would be putting the bill for them.
Do you stand?
Double taxing.
That's right.
And you're double taxing.
Double taxing.
Because I'm, okay, so then I'm paying the, the hospital district, and I'm paying the county.
To go down, that's why I said it's much better.
To serve people.
Or we use your tax dollars two different ways, huge difference, huge difference. The only way we'd be taxed twice if we.
Paying for any of it.
Let's see, we're, we're, we're not doing something else, I would have done.
No, I can't hear anything, hold on, so finish your statement, and then I'll.
I pay taxes to the county.
Yes.
And I pay taxes to the hospital district.
Yes.
For this service, and people are getting this service who are not paying to either.
Nobody arguing that, that's what we're trying to remedy, my point was this.
Wait a minute, they would be paying to the county, I take that back, they would be paying, so people in Wetmore or whatever, would be paying county taxes, so I take that back.
But we, but you wouldn't be double taxed unless we double taxed you. If we took your tax money and split it and paid something else, that's none of your concern, that's our job, it's not, it's not double taxation, it's using your tax money in a different way.
That's right.
I, I have option seven.
Nice, I knew there was more options.
Yeah, cause the longer we're talking about this, and this is why we're glad we're doing this, is because what about, between now and the time that. An annex happens, or those people are added to the hospital district, we chart, we send them the bill. We don't do, those residents, whenever there's a nine one one call, the patient gets the bill, well, why not?
We do that anyway.
Well, the challenge is, when we respond, well, maybe it is, and that's a legal question.
Cause you're outside the district.
I'm outside my district, so if.
Are you legal to go outside?
If I, yes, yes.
Can we treat people different for EMS, so when we have people come to the clinic? And they are outside of the hospital district, we don't turn them away, but we charge them the same fee that we charge someone within the district, so I don't know how we can do that.
Right, see, you don't charge them a higher rate.
But what if, what if there's no charge, now, we just went.
That's true.
Two to three hours, and we got nothing for it, we used our crew, we used our assets, we used our.
But did you charge them or not, whether you got the money or not, doesn't matter.
So currently, currently now, when we go on a call, and that patient says, we're not gonna get transported, we, we eat it, we come back and. Or if we go and we transport, we always have the ability to make some money, if it's a Medicaid patient, we're gonna make two hundred and fifty dollars, that's it.
Takes us.
Doesn't matter, two fifty, if it's a Medicaid, Medicare, it's seven hundred.
Empirically, it's not true, because you're getting tax money to take that patient as well.
How are we getting tax money for someone outside the district?
Are you talking about outside the district, or inside the district?
It doesn't matter, doesn't matter where you live, that's what Medicaid's gonna pay.
So if you take any patient within the district, anywhere, you're getting paid for that, from the taxes, from the mill levy.
We hope so, yeah, but, yeah, well, we're getting.
And they're getting Medicare.
And you're getting Medicare, all I'm saying is, because you've said this three or four times in meetings, that if we haul a Medicaid patient, we only get paid two hundred, that's not true. You only get paid an additional two hundred and fifty, plus the tax base that you brought in.
That's right, plus our, plus our, our three mill levy, three, that doesn't come close to paying.
No, I'm not saying it is.
Yes, sir, you're right, yep, I stand corrected.
So it's an additional to the three mills, right?
So compromise.
Two to three mills.
Three mills for the, that you're getting for the district, or the.
EMS, restricted to EMS.
Restricted.
Suggested compromise, okay. We notify all the people outside your district, that effective, well, there's ninety days or more, I don't know, that because you're not in the district, and you're not paying taxes for this service. You will be billed each time an ambulance comes, each time you make a call and it leaves the ambulance barn, I don't care whether they were transported or not, you can have it a scale, you could say it's gonna be. A hundred and fifty dollars once we leave to come to you, if we transport you, it's two fifty, I don't care how you do that, okay? I don't want people to say, don't come, I'll just have my motor tech and die, that's what I don't wanna hear.
I agree.
So, let me finish.
But they certainly may.
Let me finish, so my feeling is, we attempt to collect from the residents, if we don't collect from the residents, then the county would pick up the deficit. Because it is county people, we need to take care of our county people, and I understand where you're coming from, it's not your responsibility, you're not being paid for that. So I would say we attempt to collect from the people, you said, what, sixty-five percent or so pay?
No, only thirty-one percent.
Thirty-one percent pay.
Okay, so sixty percent.
Well, no, that's our collection.
Well, that's our collection rate, our collection rate is about thirty-one percent.
So we've let you have your say, you've done.
Well.
You waited off into some areas that I've got a concern about, but I wanna make sure I'm not interrupted.
Me too.
If you're finished, okay, certainly, Jay has a right, as a commissioner, to just say what he did, I'm not arguing with that, I just certainly can't.
Just throwing a suggestion.
Yeah, that's what we're doing, I thought, just throwing stuff out.
As an option.
Sure.
One problem that I see with his option is, why would you even wanna pay, if, if you give him the choices, if you don't click, the county will pick it up, let's let that happen.
I was just taking exception with your proposal, that's all.
I still don't think about it.
Yeah, I mean, if these people aren't paying a tax for ambulance service, then by God, it don't matter who they are or where they live, if you're not paying a tax, then what do you want? You either want an ambulance, or you don't, and if you want an ambulance, you're gonna pay for it, or we're not coming.
Or we're gonna put it on, they're gonna pay a tax.
Part of it is not just us collecting the, being able to get the run money off of it. Part of it is that the community that is in the hospital district is ponying up tax dollars for us to be available to them, twenty-four, seven, seven days a week. So the fact that we go somewhere else outside the district, and we are able to collect the run money, that still doesn't negate, we are removing ourselves from, from our people who are supposed to.
We're not talking second and third run here, we're talking primary run, so we haven't peeled the layer off of that.
So for debate.
What about the car accidents?
That's what I was gonna say.
What about what?
What about the car accidents that are mile marker in that area, outside mile markers?
Are they any different than a heart attack? No, I don't think so.
No, neither does someone that has a car accident within the district.
That should have been considered in my budget, when you're figuring out what you need to operate.
So I was thinking of our responsibility to respond, you're thinking about, do they pay?
That also too, though, so if you're, with the billing assigned, what's the responsibility then of responding?
Right, words are moral and.
So our responsibility, if you keep all the morals and ethicals out of it, is to respond to any call that dispatch gives us within the West Custer County Hospital District. My moral hiccup is, I wanna do everything I can for everybody I can, as well does Beth, that's what we wanna do, however, we can't go broke doing it.
Right, if you do that to the point that you can't even service your own district members, then you probably need to go down the road.
Yes, sir.
That's why I think there's only one option, that they need to pay their tax, period.
So.
I mean, they've been getting a free ride, there's no question.
I would agree with you that they need to pay the tax, so I will respectfully submit to you, please make that happen.
Good point.
There's a huge liability issue, if ambulance is, has gone out on, you know, into Timbuktu, and, and taxpayers in the district can't get it, that's, that could be a huge.
That could be, you could get all your ambulances down in Wetmore at the same time, and these taxpayers are losing them.
And you're averaging Wetmore, probably that average of three hours is probably gonna bite you in the behind, because. Uh, just going down there and dealing with something, coming back's almost gonna be three hours, let alone if you have to transport, which my guess for the age, demographics in Wetmore, you're probably transporting a lot.
Now, the only bonus is, once you're in Wetmore, you're halfway to the hospital, at least those two hospitals, unless somebody wants to go to Salida, then they're gonna have to go around and go the other way.
And do they get a tech cable too?
Yeah, it's patient preference.
Not, not when you're that far away from a, the, the laws state, now, I'm sorry to correct you on that, but the law states that our crews have to take them to the closest.
Available, right, that's true, you're right, yeah, cause here, they're all the same, you're right, no, you're right. The, the, the law doesn't care about our district, the law doesn't care about our district.
Closest to.
The closest appropriate level of care for the patient, so if somebody says, I wanna go to Salida, but they're having a heart attack, they don't have a cath lab, so we're not gonna say, we're gonna say, guess what? Pick, pick Parkview, or pick St., or, you know, pick St. Mary Corwin, those are the two that we can take you to.
Right, gotcha, well, I've learned a lot, I guarantee you, this is.
And what's the cutoff for getting it on the ballot if you want to?
Well, that's kinda why this discussion is here, and this is just as the launching point.
That's why we always have Kelly.
Kelly said it's gonna be tight.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I need a letter of intent this morning, and you guys still have to do all your research and your.
Well, is it our responsibility to take our funds to do all the research so that you can cover your residents, that's part of what we have.
It's, but it's your district.
But they're not our residents, they're not our district.
Not their district, I think that's probably be on the.
Well, maybe you're right, that's a good point, that's a very good point.
But if they're wanting to add them in their district.
Oh, and actually would be.
We just say we're willing to, and it's then.
I have to tell you, I don't have.
Yeah, that's true, it's their.
Right, well, it's our hospital district, but we are willing to, as a hospital district, to, to say, again, I'm gonna say this, if you guys do the homework. We will absolutely pony and, and, and partner with you, but I know for a fact, we don't have the money at all for all the legal, we don't, we do not have the money.
Put a ballot on to bring somebody else into your district, I get it.
I wish I could say, yeah, we can do this, we cannot.
Kelly, when is the next regular election, I, I don't think this is.
In November, it's not gonna.
We're not gonna make it?
Yeah, it would be, it'd be hard.
Special election is very expensive, what's a special election cost us about?
Well, you wouldn't have a special election for something like this, it would have to be on a November ballot.
So if you got time, it's still time.
And we have to bring it to our board as well, and make sure that they.
Come up before now, that's kinda crazy.
You know, it's just, it's always been done that way, and I don't think anybody ever talked about it a whole lot until.
It wasn't until Beth and I sat down, I said, so this is, this is our district, I said, and we're going here, I'm like, ooh, and she's like, well, yeah, Lisa, we've always done that, I'm like, for how long? She says, as long as I've been here, Jen started this map a long time ago, I'm like, huh, I'm like, oh, Lord have mercy, we've been responding outside of our district.
We've been doing it way before that.
Oh, we've been doing it for nineteen eighty-eight, I'm sure.
Well, you think Custer County.
What's the action out, who's gonna do what?
That's a question, I mean, now, we talked about a workshop, so we can kinda get in, more in the weeds in this.
We need to get some information, we gotta get the process and how the timing has to.
Maybe you guys could get, someone could get with J D and figure out who is the best person to figure out the true ramifications from a property tax mill levy standpoint, cause his email indicates that. Because I'm thinking, and this is just my being a little naive and not understanding how. little naive and not understanding how to calculate Gallagher and Taber, I don't want